Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 7th, 2017 regular meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Let the record note that all members are present and the meeting is called to order. And we will begin, please, with a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you'll join and if you'll rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. So this is a time set aside for planning commissioner announcements? Are there any announcements this evening?
Yeah, I'd like to announce that there's going to be Easter at the Rock. It's been going on for years now, and there's a sunrise service and a 10 o'clock service. And if you're just going there to surf or anything, there's going to be coffee, bagels, muffins, and stuff, so at least come by and get some vittles before you go into water.
My mom told me that wasn't a good idea. I would just like to note that for those of you who are interested in the general plan process, there will be a GPAC meeting tomorrow afternoon, 4 to 6. And is that at the community center, Scott, or is it here at the Veterans Hall?
No, it's here.
Pardon?
It's here.
It's here at the Veterans Hall. So tomorrow, that's tomorrow afternoon, 4 to 6. We certainly welcome public participation in that. We actually will move on then to public comment period. This is a period set aside for basically any comments that you'd like to make, step forward. We'd love to hear from you. Give us your name.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff, and the general public. My name is Roy Sinner-Walt. I'm the owner, operator of a nine-unit apartment building immediately adjacent to the body shop. Two-story structure.
Excuse me. Unless you're not able to stay for this item, you should speak at public comment in relation to that specific item, which is coming up on the agenda.
We will have a public comment period for B1.
Beg your pardon.
But if you'd like to speak now, that's okay. We're not formal.
I'd like to address the request for variance or continuation of a... Should I come up later?
It would be better.
Sure, well, whatever.
Yeah. There will be a public comment period for that item also. Anyone else? General public comment? Okay, seeing none then. We will bring it back to the commission. We actually do have a presentation this evening.
I think we're going to move that to the next meeting. It was going to be for Richard, and he had both the WRFCAC meeting and planning commission meeting to get ready for, and would like a little more time so he can put together a better presentation to the planning commission. So we're going to bump that to the next.
And the League of California Cities, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Busy week.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And I just want to let you know, I'm going to do a little write-up, so make it easier, and then I'll have a handout, and I'll give it to staff so we can then follow up with some questions. Thank you.
So you're getting an incomplete. Then we will move on to the consent calendar, which this evening consists of A1, the current advanced planning processing list, and A2, approval of minutes from the planning commission of January 3rd. Are there any comments, questions, corrections? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, A1 and A2.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. So now we will move on to public hearings. And our first public hearing item, B1, is case number UP-0-468 concerning property at 340 Jamaica Street in Morro Bay. This is an item that was continued from our 221 meeting, and I believe that Joan is going to give us a presentation on this.
Thank you, Chairman Teft, and good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. The first item before you this evening is a request for conditional use permit approval at 340 Jamaica Street. I apologize. I misplaced my notes. Excuse me, just one second. are looking at a conditional use permit approval at 340 Jamaica Street. The request is to allow for the re-permitting of an auto body paint and body shop that has been in continuous operation since 1981. The applicant and owner of Auto Body Builders, Jason Paul, is proposing to continue the, to utilize the site as an automobile paint and body shop. The property is located within the R1-S1 residential zoning district in the Delmar neighborhood in North Morro Bay. It's located to the east of Main Street and Highway 1 and to the north of Delmar Park. So historically, this parcel has been used for automobile repair purposes since before the city was incorporated. And then in 1981, the owner was granted a conditional use permit to allow for automobile paint and bodywork. This approval was to expire in 1986, and the use at that time was to revert back to an automobile mechanics shop or to an allowed use in the zoning district at that time. This did not happen, and the use has remained in operation uninterrupted to the present day or for approximately 31 years. It's important to note that the air pollution control district has been evaluating and permitting this use. The current permit to operate from the APCD was issued in 2011 with annual re-evaluation. So the most current re-evaluation occurred with the change of ownership in September of 2016. At that time, the APCD found no increase in emissions and substantial conformance with the standards, and they will re-permit the use with the appropriate conditions of approval upon the applicant securing a conditional use permit from the city. It's also important to note that as a condition of approval, if you so choose to approve this project, the applicant shall be required to perform all mechanized sanding and grinding within the building to further reduce any airborne particulate matter that the APCD will, that is under their jurisdiction. So the main issues associated with the use of this location are noise, odor, and the proximity to residential uses. If the permit is approved, there's also a condition of approval that has been included in the resolution, which requires the applicant to submit an acoustical analysis with any mitigations to ensure that the proposed use adheres to Morro Bay Municipal Code, the section that pertains to daytime decibel levels. Another potential issue is odor. We also have a section in our ordinance that deals with performance standards. It's 17.52.070 of the municipal code that prohibits any use from discharging any contaminant that will present a nuisance or hazard that exceeds the allowable air pollution control district standards. The community development department has therefore reached out to APCD for both emissions and odor. They have been to the site three times since September, and they have not verified an odor issue. At this time, even as of today, I spoke with Dora from the APCD, and it is their contention that there is no substantial issue and that public nuisance threshold has not been met. The other main issue for this use of this location is safety concerns due to its proximity to residential uses. So working closely with the fire marshal, the applicant, Mr. Paul, is proposing to install locking storage cabinets. Excuse me. You can see there on the right-hand side of the floor plan for all the hazardous materials as well as installing a dry chemical fire suppression system within the existing paint booth. This is the site plan. I apologize for the quality of it. It's a little difficult to read, but you can see the hatched areas surrounding the site show the proximity of the residential uses to this proposed use. It's also important to note that the temporary fabric-covered carport structures shall be removed as a condition of approval as well. It is a staff's recommendation that the planning commission take one of the following actions: either approve the use through the adoption of UP-0, or approve UP-0468 by adopting the findings and conditions of approval, which are included in the resolution 0.17. Either that, you can continue the review of the conditional use permit to a date uncertain with direction, or your third option is to deny the use permit. And that's it. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Joan. Are there any questions for staff at this point?
Joan, you don't have to tell me yet, but a question I'm going to want to know is, after all the, after all the testimony given by the audience, can you map for us who has spoken of the immediate neighbors around the facility? It's kind of hard for me to get all the addresses. I don't know if you know who they are, but in going through the correspondence, you don't have to say now, but when it's done, maybe.
I can show you.
Okay.
I can show you right now where the three that I have received are located. It is the owner of the apartment building. I'm sorry, I'll have to stand. My pointer isn't working. Do you have one? So the apartment building is located directly adjacent to the west. It's that long structure.
Right.
Thank you.
And that faces, that faces Main Street.
That faces Main Street, yeah. The back of their building is adjacent to this use. It's, okay, boss, help. That one. Okay. And then they're, and they are all two stories, which is interesting. I had a really interesting conversation with the engineer from APCD, and he talked about, so the main complainant lives here, and that is a single-story structure. And there is potential for, I can't speak to the science behind it, but for there to be sort of a swell there based on the winds, and there is potential to have more of an issue at that location. It has not been substantiated, but he said that it is, based on physics, it is a possibility. The other complainant lives across the street.
On the, on the south side?
On island.
Okay, okay. And then the, can you tell me, is the Knight Trust the one that owns the apartment building?
I believe the Knight Trust owns the single-story building. I am not certain of that. I believe that there is somebody here in the audience that would be able to speak to that, if I can put that out there. Okay.
Okay, let me ask you another question. One of the things in Exhibit E is on, let's see, doesn't have page numbers, but it's the last page of Exhibit E. The, the amount of, that's not it. Let me, because go to the page, first page of Exhibit E. I'm sorry. The air pollution control district is tracking the volume in pounds of volatile organic chemicals, and it spiked about four times higher in 2015 versus 2014. And 2015 looks like it's larger than the three years combined earlier. What was, what was there, did they express a concern about that?
I again asked Dora about that specifically today, because I was a little unclear about it. She explained to me their thresholds and how they look for, it falls within the same level on their spectrum, if you will, on their scale. So for their purposes, they have found that there is no substantial increase.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
I can also tell you that upon securing a conditional use permit from us, the APCD will permit them with their own set of conditions of approval.
Okay, thanks.
Joan, a little bit on the history. The original conditional use permit, well, this may be more procedural. Is it not uncommon, or is it common, for, like, if you have a conditional use permit to, for, to rezone a property through a conditional use permit?
It's not rezoning. Conditional use permits typically will allow something that may not be a principally permitted use in the zone, like a residential unit, a single-family residential unit in R1 zone. That's a principally permitted use. But you could have something in a residential zone that maybe you allow duplexes in a residential zone with a conditional use permit in certain, in certain R1 zones, say, that have larger lots or something like that, because you want to increase the availability of affordable housing or something like that. So you could have things that are of that nature that would be subject to permitting by a conditional use permit. So all this did is said, hey, you know, we have this use in here, and the city at the time, when it was originally permitted back in the 80s, recognized that this might not be a compatible use with the adjacent residential uses. It's more of an industrial-type use, and so placed a limitation on the amount of time that it could operate, because it probably should have, at the time, been located in an industrial zone, given what they were doing. Probably more consistent with that. So they placed certain conditions on it to make it operate in a more friendly manner adjacent to existing, the existing residential zones. And so in order to make it fit in there next to the residential zone, you add certain conditions to make it fit in better, I guess. It's typically what it's used for.
Okay, this has helped me for my education, and others, you know. If, would, hypothetically, if you had a hobby in your garage, like making grandfather clocks or whatever, you would be requiring a conditional use permit to be able to do that?
Not necessarily. It depends the amount of space that would be being used for it and what impact it would be. Like, would that, would that hobby be noticed outside of the existing garage? If somebody was conducting, like, they were a cabinet maker, and they were making those out of their house, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be an acceptable use. So we do allow businesses and homes through a home occupation permit process, but typically they're like, you use it for office use, that type of thing. You don't use it for making cabinets. So that makes sense.
Thank you.
Jerry, Joe?
I just have two questions. Joan, I believe the applicant owns the business but not the real estate. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And just so, just, again, I'm trying to keep track of the various emails that have been sent to us, and whether they're for or not. I seem to recall that in terms of the communications that were opposed to the application, there was, of course, the complainant. And then I think there were two landlords that weren't, it's yet to be determined whether they live or do not live on the property.
Correct.
Two owners of nearby properties. Is that correct?
Correct. It is the, the, let's see, it is the renter and the owner at, I broke your pen, at the single-story home, at the single-story residence. It is the owner and the renter, as well as the owner of the apartment building.
Thank you.
I have, I've spoken to the owner of the parcel in question a few times, and his letter of support is, was received today and is on, in your pile, as well as, I apologize, any communication that I had received today. Has, there are copies available if anyone would like to read them on the table.
Joan, do you know when the adjacent lots have been developed, or when, in the residential, or when they've been upgraded to two-story buildings?
It's not something we looked into as it relates to this application.
No, not really. I would say a few within the last 10 to 15 years.
Okay, thanks.
Just one question. And if you don't know this, I'm sure the applicant will. Do you know the height of the exhaust stack for the paint booth?
Oh, I, I do not. I can, we can probably extrapolate from some photos. I would say...
It's on the plan.
It's on the plan. The height of your exhaust is on the plan?
There's a measure from floor to roof height, and then roof height to top exhaust.
You're looking at, is that really six, seven feet? Roofed exhaust?
Could be.
Is that a filter box section at the top of the roof? I could check with Jason.
That looks like what it's supposed to be.
Okay. It appears to say seven feet. I do not have a full-size set of plans in front of me, and I forgot my glasses.
Seven feet above roof height.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it looks like.
Okay. If there are no other questions for staff then, I will ask if there have been any ex parte communications to be reported on this item?
I had talked to a couple of the concerned citizens in the neighborhood.
Okay. Then we will open this up to public comment, please. We'd love to hear from you. Usually, we give the applicant the opportunity to speak first.
Good evening, everyone. This is the first time me doing this. I'm trying not to be long-winded, just go through a few points. I am a small business owner in this town. I do care about my neighborhoods. I have two businesses in this town. I read through the complaints. Since I took over the shop, I have been making improvements to it from the time I took over. The current permitting we are trying to receive regarding the chemicals that we do spray now, and the compliance with the county, are much more improved over the chemicals of when this was initially permitted in 1981. Before I bought this business, I came in, checked with the city, because I was buying it as a secondary unit for my shop I have in town now where I build custom cars. I was sending my paint out of town, because we didn't have anybody in town that could paint, because Bob was busy on his own. The whole reason I bought that was to expand my business, so I had somewhere to complete the vehicles that I was doing. In checking with the city, I came in before I purchased it and asked. No one did a formal research into it, but they had said, oh, we know exactly what you're talking about. That's on a conditional use permit. As long as the use doesn't change, you should be fine. I went and purchased the business. Bob, the former owner, he believed everything was current. In the paperwork that I was supplied after the complaint is when this was found out, after I'd purchased it, where it states that it was from 1981 to 1986, he had no information on that, that that was expiring. There'd be no reason for him to go through and spend all the expense of putting in a full paint booth, all the stuff that's required with that, all the permitting, et cetera, for a five-year plan. He didn't realize that at that time, and he didn't know anything about the expiration. Even after the fact, once we found out and I approached him about it, they were shocked to hear about it. I made many improvements on my own, just taking over, on the booth itself. According to APCD, we're actually using stacked filters, a few other things. I did notice the odor complaint in there. There are other things I can do to remediate that issue. I've looked into, we can use an exhaust filter that contains activated charcoal, which is what they use in gas masks for the military. It's what they use in hazmat suits, and a lot of paint companies do use that. We can retrofit the stack, so it will accept a charcoal exhaust filter up at the top, which should remediate the odor that has been a complaint. As far as the complaint on the compressor, it's the same exact compressor that has been there for multiple years. I put that in my plan on how I can remediate that, by insulating that room acoustically. The noise complaint was brought to me that it has to be under the city's threshold, yet no one in the city has a way to measure that. It's all hearsay, as far as, I think it's louder than it's supposed to be. I actually had that measured, and we are between 68 and 72 dB at my property line right now without it being acoustically isolated. So there shouldn't be a problem bringing that into compliance upon issuing of the permit. From the time I moved in, I did get complaints from the next-door neighbor. Right off the bat, he would come over and say, I don't want to be that guy, but, because there is a new guy in there now, so he figured he would talk to me. I tried to take care of those issues. He complained about the fan on the roof being noisy. I actually built an insulated box around it. He had said that was better. He complained about the compressor running. I tried to do everything I could to alleviate it. The compressor actually had a leak, so it was running all the time. I fixed that on my own before this became a big issue and there was actually a formal complaint. He called the county on us. The county came out, they did their report, and they found that we were within tolerance. So that's when he proceeded to go to the city, and he, and so we got code enforcement out there. After that, he proceeded to call the police department on me. And the police department came out, and with the police department there in the report, which is in your guys' stuff, they actually found that they couldn't find a noticeable odor or a noticeable noise that should have been to the point where it was. I've read through and I have looked at all the complaints, and I think with what I had put into the plan, et cetera, that they should be able to remediate any issues. Business has been operating for 35 years in that location as a paint shop. Before that, the same owner had it as an auto mechanic shop for two years. Before that, Shorty's Mechanic Shop was in there, and before that, Red Truett was in there. It has had a history of that, and we have, we do have support from some of the neighbors directly across the street and directly next door to the property. The owner of the apartment, I saw in his complaint that he had put down that every tenant had complained about it, which, I mean, it's hearsay, me saying that's not true, because I do have, in all the paperwork that was also submitted, some of the apartment tenants did sign a paper saying that they support us and that we're not a problem. In there, on the neighborhood app printout, I had printed out where neighborhoods can comment on things going on in the neighborhood, tenants in that apartment complex also said that they didn't notice anything when they had heard there was a complaint about it that lived directly next door to us.
Jason, excuse me one second. I will also corroborate that I have spoken to two people from the apartment building that are in support of the project.
A few of the other complaints that I'd just like to address real quick is, it was also noted in there that we park all up and down the street. At no time do we park our vehicles outside of my property area or my fenced yard. We do not take up any street parking in front of the apartment, in front of the market. We do not take up any street parking in front of the apartment, in front of the market, et cetera. Since other businesses have moved in there, I have noticed an increase of people parking on the street, but that is a small commercial complex, and they don't have a whole lot of parking, so people that are going there do park out there. The other thing I had noticed in there was that two of the complaints, which were very, very similar, and I believe they're neighbors, both said that the fumes from us doing fiberglass are overwhelming. We have not done any fiberglass in that business. Matter of fact, the day that the complaint called the police department was the day that he had said we were doing fiberglass, and the police officer that had came in, and it's in his report, noted that we weren't doing any fiberglass, and he didn't understand what their issue was as far as that went. Like I said, we do have neighbors that support us. I'll let them make their own comments on what they think of our operation. It was noted in there that the previous owner was using it as more of a hobby shop-type use, which is not true. Bob supported himself and his family for over 35 years off that business with multiple employees, multiple cars, et cetera. I have three full-time employees that work there. I'm in and out. One of them handles mainly the paperwork, and she does estimates, and she helps out in the shop when she has time. One of them is more mechanically oriented. He's doing assembly, et cetera, on cars. And then one of them does bodywork, and he does the paint as a full-time painter, full-time body guy. We generally work on about three cars a week that are all minor repair. I don't do anything that's close to being long-term project, that's almost totaled, et cetera. We do a lot of small repair, bumpers, door, a fender, et cetera, small scratch and dent. I bumped into a post, et cetera. We work Monday to Friday. We do not work after 6:00, and we don't work before 8:00. Let's see, what else? That's about all I have. I do take the complaints from neighborhood serious. I understand that I am operating a business in an area that is adjacent to some commercial. We're right on the threshold. It does have a history of being mechanical fabrication-type business, longer than any of the other tenants have been in that area. I did note that there were some things in the complaints about my property values, et cetera. Every one of those properties was purchased during the time that this was already an auto body shop. It was not approved after they had purchased it. All the purchases were while it was an operating body shop. I think that's about it. I mean, I don't, if you guys have any questions after people comment, I'm more than willing to answer any questions and give you any other insight that I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And just for the sake of efficiency, we'll hold all our questions to the end.
Hi, my name's Diane, and I live directly next door to the auto body shop. No one's come to me and talked to me. It seems as though they only go and talk to the people that are complaining and not the people that don't have a problem with it. The last time that property was listed, the agent who is in Cayucus went to the city, and it said, "Property is presently has a variance to operate as an auto body repair shop since 1974. City of Morro Bay states that the new buyer can continue to operate as a body shop only or build two residential, single-family homes." So I don't understand why, all of a sudden, I'm in the same house that my mother owned, my grandfather owned, he was good friends with the last owner, they've never had a problem. The new guy that bought it, he went down, made sure everything was fine. I don't know why he's the one that's getting stuck with this big problem because the city made an error. So I just want to let you know, I live directly next door. My window opens, my kitchen window opens directly to his opening where he does all of his work. I smell nothing. I do hear things, never too late, never too early, but it's not really loud. It's no louder than it has been. My grandparents bought my house in 1980, and like I said, according to the people that have been trying to sell it, it's had a variance since 1974. So I'm hoping that you'll let him continue the same business that's been there all these years and talk to some of the people that don't have a problem, not only the people that are complaining. Thank you.
Could you please point out which house you live in?
I can't even tell it.
It's the one to the left, Diane.
Yeah, that one? Okay.
My window is literally right there.
Okay.
It's open all the time.
Thank you.
I never have a problem smelling, I never have a problem with noise. I live, my bedroom's upstairs. I never get opened up by him. So I don't understand why he's getting picked on.
My name's Linda Richardson. I live next door to Diane. I'm one door away from, a little further away than she is, and I have never had any complaints about this business. I've never heard any complaints from any of my neighbors about this business. I've been there for about five years. For the first year that I lived there, I thought that was a gym. I thought it was a bodybuilding business. I didn't know it was, until I saw a tow truck drop a car off there one day. I was like, "Oh, I guess I read that sign wrong." I've never heard noises after hours, before hours. They're not particularly noisy during the day. I've never smelled anything. They're good neighbors. Do you have any questions for me?
We'll save our questions till then. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is William Kosky. My wife and I, Terry, live at 311 Sicily, which is about five or six blocks up Highway 1, but the exact same distance away from the highway. I'm on the second house from Main Street. I've been by the shop four or five times. I've been in the shop. I found out about it riding by my bicycle, and it turns out that, talking to them, I have an older Porsche that had some door dents. We just moved up here in January. I was going to have it worked on down in LA and then in San Luis Obispo, and the methodology they were going to use was, it was going to be a couple thousand dollars, and they'd have to pull doors off and everything. Jason's people took a look at it. They were able to do some innovative approach on the repairs, and they're basically a third of what they would have cost elsewhere. The beauty of, that was really encouraging, it was really, really nice, was actually getting to drive my car to the body shop, get out, walk home, then walk back to the body shop to pick it up and when it's done. And it was there for three days. In the times that I've been there, I've never seen more than one car being worked on. I'm not there all the time, so I don't know what happens otherwise, but in the times I was there, I hadn't seen any cars being worked on. I've seen cars that people seem to be visiting his shop that are parked directly out in front. I don't know if some of the other cars on the street belong to folks involved with him. I assume not, because there's spots where it seemed like they're available in front of him. I did see some red cones, though, out on the street, and I don't know what, I don't know who is allowed to put cones out to save spaces. I know you can't do that on my street, so I'm not sure where those come from or how that came about. So the other issue is, I knew that there was a sound issue. I think there'd been mention, I don't know if it's in the complaint, but I heard their mention about listening to the seabreeze, you know, listening to the ocean and not being able to hear it over the compressors and whatnot. Living two houses from, like I said, from Main Street, I know that you cannot hear the ocean until 10:00 at night. It's impossible. And to an extent, again, and again, I'm not there over right in front of his place, so I really can't comment on him, but I'm just going back to where I am. The same thing, you know, to an extent, if you were hoping to smell the seabreeze during the day, those same cars and trucks that make all the racket, you know, driving down the road, actually, you know, they're kind of smelly, too, you know? But when we bought there, we knew that was the case. We more than accepted it. We knew, you know, to live at that place, you know, where we are, at the price that we paid, that's what we have to do. So it was completely acceptable to us. So again, all my experiences have been positive, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, planning commission. This is Paul Cuney. I've been in Morro Bay since 1958. Was a commercial fisherman here. I've now gone into collecting old cars, and I've used that shop on nine of my cars, and it's very convenient and very handy for me to have a body shop in town, because I don't like the driving to San Luis, strange people. And I like to keep my business here. And I really would like to see him stay in business so he can work on my cars as I go. So anyhow, that's my input.
Good evening. I am the infamous Bob Tapia. See, I'm the one that started this. It's all my fault, yeah. But I just want to explain something. There's more to Morro Bay than just Morro Bay. There's a city of people. And we make it a practice, at least when I was there for the 30-some-odd years, to not only repair the city's vehicles, the fire departments, the police department, the city council's department, and didn't charge them a single cent. Because I really believe that the fathers of this city have a right and responsibility of it taken care of, us as people in this city. So I'd always taken my time to work on your vehicles and not charge a single thing. And if I could get the police department down here and the fire department, they would agree with that. But most importantly is the elderly within our city. Not only do we take care of their needs, their accidents, their scrapes, but we also take care of them, too. It is important for me to be able to work with these individuals. Now, when it comes time for the city or the people complaining about the fumes, very little painting is done each day. And many times, the inspector would come by, just drive by, and he was parked out in front of the shop to see if he could actually smell anything, and he still couldn't. He says, "Because you're not open half the time." I always, it was a minimal. So when I retired, and believe me, one of these days you will retire, and you'll look forward and be able to say, "You did good." I am proud that I was here for the 30-some-odd years serving Morro Bay and taking care of the needs of our elderly and our young ones as well. But most of all, I'm proud that these individuals who have come up here have spoke their heart and been able to say for a fact that if it wasn't for that shop, many of them would not have vehicles, or they'd be running around with cars messed up, banged up. So I just want to say that Jason is like my son. He's not just a stranger that walked out. When I came time to retire, there was several people that wanted to buy the shop, and I wouldn't sell it to them, because I wanted somebody there that would take care of it the same way as I would take care of it. And Jason fit the bill. I've known him since he was a kid. Matter of fact, I married him. Shh.
Well, he married us.
Yeah. But I knew he would take the same standards as what we have. As far as my neighbors concerned, each and every one of my neighbors always makes sure that their needs are taken care of as well. And so the complaints I can see on a large scale are valid, but this isn't a large scale. And all you have to do is talk to the inspectors that come every year to inspect how much pollutions were taken out, and they'll tell you for a fact, and I have their cards, and they'll tell you from the city of San Luis Obispo, "You're not doing enough to really make a difference." And so they just walk in, sign it off, and walk away because of the small amount of painting that we do. I just want to let you know that I didn't give it to someone that was greedy, trying to make a million. I gave it to a family man like myself. And my daughter's here. She wants to say a few words, because she worked there, too.
I'm short. So my name's Jenny Vinaueva. I am my father's daughter. Jason has talked about how he has raised, this was a full-time business, as was talked about for over 35 years. Each one of us, there's four of us children, each one of us through the years have worked at this business. My dad also employed multiple employees, not just family members. However, you know, as he recently was getting ready to retire, he did have both of his daughters working with him. That was a four-day-a-week business, and the work usually consisted of a couple of collision jobs a week, and when we weren't working on that, we had complete restoration jobs that were in the building, being worked on. So from what we can see, nothing really has changed in regards to the amount of work that is being produced. The issue with the permit, you know, it's just, one of the things that, you know, has been mentioned, it's sad, and it would be very sad for somebody to be penalized for that because of the fact that if the city didn't even know that it lapsed, how would we know that it lapsed? So really, that should not, shouldn't be a penalizing factor. Obviously, taking into consideration the other individuals who, you know, have a right to speak their mind. But at the same time, this is a small business that has been there for so long, and it serves a purpose to the community and to a county, San Luis County, that prides itself on its small businesses. Hopefully, you'll see that that is the most important thing here. Thank you.
Gentlemen, commissioners, my name is Rick Young. I'm a resident of Morro Bay for 16 years now. Although I haven't had the same experience as Paul, my good friend behind you, with having nine cars worked on, I have stopped in and talked to Jason several times for estimates and advice on how to get certain jobs done. I did take a class at Questa last year in painting, and the times that I was there, everything about his shop that I could see was very professional, above-board, and with no hang-ups looking out like he was doing something that should be thought of as not appropriate. So just as a person who lives in town, I think we need businesses like this to stay in town. And so the only way to do that is to make sure, as he says, he's in compliance with all of the laws. I think the complaints that he's had, they may be valid, but as long as he's in compliance with the law, that's part of living. You learn about those things, and you get along with them. So for me, I want to see him stay here. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rick Cobbs. I've lived in Morro Bay for 14 years. Prior to that, I came from the garden spot of the West Coast, Fresno, where I was a law enforcement officer for 36 years. Over that time, I developed a real good ability to read people and to understand people. And when I first got here to this beautiful community, it was like moving to a third-world country for me as a car enthusiast. Without UPS and Federal Express, we don't have anything. There's nothing here. For support the car folks. And I might add, while I'm at it, that the car folks support the Car Show, as you know, every May in our beautiful community, is the largest show of its kind in the area and brings in more people than any other event in this community. Sometimes 15 to 20. Sometimes fifteen to twenty thousand people. Jason is a part of that. He supports that, the car show. He supports the guys that are working on their cars and goes above and beyond in that in doing so. I would like to just put a little spin on, we've been talking about his business, I'd like to talk a little bit about the man and his family. Over about ten years, last ten years, I've got to know his family, and I just want you to know that he has a great family, he has strong family values. He believes in treating people the correct way. He respects people in his business ethics. This man is not only a mechanic, but he is also known worldwide, I don't know if you know that, for his ability to build custom cars. He has built cars from people as far away as Denmark that have come to this community to have their car built by Jason, Paul, and his crew of folks. He has been in numerous magazines throughout our nation and national magazines showing his cars. He has shown his cars in places, and it may not mean much to you, but it's the really the high-dollar people, the big pocketbooks, like the Grand National Roadster Show. Does that mean I need to sit down and shut up? The buzzer went off?
You're getting there.
I would, I just want you to know that it's a real great service to me to be able to go to somebody like Jason and say, "Jason, my car caught on fire and I need help." I don't have to drive it to slow or put it on a trailer and take it to slow. I can take it to Jason and his crew, and they will fix it. And they've done a complete job. In fact, they did such a wonderful job that, you know how these insurance companies are. I won't name the name of my farmer's insurance, but they were so impressed with his work that they put him on their list of vendors without any hesitation at all after seeing the type of work that he did. And I just think it would really be a great loss to lose this man from our community. And I think each one of you might be able to, the way people drive around here, I'm sure that you're going to want to see him someday, either for a bumper or a door or something of that nature. Anyway, that's my spin on Jason and his business.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jerry Lane. I live in North Morro Bay. I've known Jason for probably twenty years, I guess, eighteen years. We've lived here about twenty-two. He's done a lot of work for me at a cost that I couldn't get done anyplace else, honestly. I couldn't afford my street run. I had Bob, the previous owner, do a lot of work on my regular cars, and the neat thing is I could walk there. But my real concern about Jason's shop is the people that might lose their jobs if we don't leave it open. He employs three or four, sometimes five or six people there, depending on the need, but he's got a steady crew of three, I think, at the body shop. Is that right, Jason?
Three there, and then...
Three, and then he's got more at the other shop. He's probably got ten employees. But I would hate to lose those jobs in Morro Bay, as we all know, they're tough enough to come by. So please take all the consideration that you can in permitting that shop. Thank you.
Good evening, crowd in support of Jason's shop. I am one of the complatants, so it puts me at a little bit of odds with everybody here. I live on Island Street. I heard earlier...
Your name for the record, please, sir?
I said Evans. Evans Cowan.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. I did hear earlier that there was an amount of, I guess we'd call that in a higher tolerance than in past years. In 2015, there was an amount of pollutants or amount of smell, I'm not sure what the right word for it was. Can you remind me what that was? There was something, 2015 rather than the prior three years, there was an amount of pollutants or amount of paint smell or something like that. Anyway, my point is, is that like when you have a lab report from a hospital or from a doctor's office, you have a high range in a tolerance and a low range in a tolerance, something has changed. I've been in this neighborhood since 2001, and the change in the amount of odor that has come from the shop has increased, all right? And I'm not sure if you're familiar with the planners' training series put out by the governor on conditional use permit, but on page three, it says, "General welfare standard. The establishment, maintenance, and conducting of the use for which the use permit is sought will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood." This is case law, Hawkins versus the County of Marin. And then on page four, zoning consistency standards. The applicant must generally show that the contemplated use is compatible with the policies in terms of the zoning ordinances, and that such use would be essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, and will not impair the integrity and character of the zone district or be detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, or welfare." Again, this is case law, okay? So the reason I bring that up is because I know that the people here are supportive of this business, and I'm not anti-business. But the increase in the amount of odor, even though it may be within this tolerance range, even like when you have, the water district has a tolerance range, if you get up above so much usage, then you get charged into the next tier. Well, we're close to that next tier. It's already been established that this amount of particulate matter or this amount has gone up to the upper threshold. So I'm hoping that you'll at least choose option two, that you had up here, and continue us to find out and put in an environmental impact report, because I'm not sure I've done, I've heard that done yet. But I think it would be prudent for you to do an environmental impact report. And I think also, let me see if I can find it. I think that's about it. I don't have anything else to say, but something has changed in the 2000, since 2001, the increase has really changed in the last two years. Thank you.
Something I haven't heard brought up before, that that shop has been running for many years under old environmental laws and high VOC paints. The EPA has made so many changes that all the paints that everybody is using now are low VOCs, are low odors, low smell, low environmental impact. So that all the work that he's going to do in the new shop is to the new environmental laws. And the reason I'm so unhappy about it is that all of my original paints on my cars are now destroyed, and now I gotta use new water-based paints, and they don't look as good as the old paints. But what's important is that the environmental impact that goes on in Morro Bay due to this shop is so much less than it ever was in the past that I don't think it's a concern. Second Amendment.
It's not about noise or anything. It's the character of the gentleman that owns the shop. I'm speaking for Corky Miles from Cambria because he can't be here tonight. On the 25th of February, we were in Corky's...
Ma'am, I'm terribly sorry to interrupt, but can you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm Barbara Brebs.
Thank you.
And I've been here since 1937. I've seen a lot of changes and not all for the good. We were in Corky's rare Ford Ranger, and we were the first to be hit by the Chevrolet truck that went into the French bakery. And the insurance company wanted to total the truck, and we were devastated. And Kyle at Pete's Auto Repair told me about the shop, and so did Drew Zderas. And so I went out there, and can you believe that gentleman drove clear to Cambria to look at that pickup? How many auto body shops do that for you? I just can't say enough about the young man. And he got on the computer and the phone, and he convinced the insurance company that our truck was worth quite a bit. So we got more money to fix it up. It wasn't junked, and it wasn't sold for parts. And he's walking us through all of the paperwork and the DMV, and we just couldn't be any happier. And please, give him a permit, whatever it is, so he can continue working there. And a little bit of noise during the day, a car going by and going plop, plop on the sewer thing by my house. Four cars go by, four times, it goes plump, plump. But people are working. It's not unnecessary noise. So please, don't make it tough for him.
I'm back. Good evening again. My name is Roy Sinnerwalt. I'm the guy with the two-story building adjacent to 340. Nobody here has mentioned a couple things, and I'd like to bring it up. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Bob and Jason as impeccably first-class people. They run a great business, have no problem with that. This is not about Jason or Bob. I do question whether that business is in the right place. I do question why, in 1986, when it was due to expire, the permit was due to expire, why? It suddenly went from a mechanical shop where guys changing spark plugs to a paint shop in 1986. A building that I own was built in 1971. I've owned it, I'm in my eighth year of ownership. The appropriateness of the obsolete concept of having a paint shop smack dead center in the middle of a residential area, I don't understand. All the homes have setbacks with yards, a lot of them have nice plantings. This industrial building has asphalt right up to the building, every inch of it, and trucks and cars parked across the front. Zero landscape. I don't think it's a good fit, okay? Moving on here a little bit, I have twenty-two people in a two-story building. People ask about the height of the stack, of the exhaust vent, to be exact. Well, I don't know the height of my second floor in the apartment, but several of the apartments, you look straight out the window, and you're looking at it. I have twenty-two people in the building, six children under the age of six. Something to think about. Nobody here has mentioned a prevailing wind. Someone said the building inspector parked out front and didn't smell anything. Small wonder. The winds come from the northwest, across Jamaica, across this building, and into the neighbor's yard and over to Island. This seems to have escaped everybody's attention. The wind drafts the contents of the exhaust air and drifts it down over my neighbor's yard and my apartment backyards and windows, over Island. And the fellow who spoke about living on Island is correct. He gets it. Okay, so why am I here? I kind of am very concerned about six children under age six. I also have three tenants who work for the state, shift work, and are day sleepers very Jason said it could attenuate the compressor noise. Well, that would be nice. But the vapors and the odors coming off that vent, I can vouch for. I have stood on Island Avenue, stood at my own carport on Island Avenue. It's a real thing. Nobody's making this up. But you could pick it up on Island, but if you go again on Jamaica, you won't because the wind is from your back blowing across the building, no surprise. Why hasn't that been mentioned? So the obsolete concept of having an industrial building smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood, even though all the neighbors are happy, might be a false sense of security. I don't know if the people that own the property own their own homes adjacent, but there's such a thing in a commercial sale contract that's called disclosure. Anybody selling their house, particularly the one that's affected on Island, must mention, "Hey, you're going to smell fumes and vapors," odor, to the new prospective owner. This is called disclosure. It's a very real thing. I'm seventy-five years old, there could be a time when I sell my building. I have the contract of sale right here. There are two specific places that say, "If there is something unusual in the environment or in the neighborhood, you as a seller must disclose." This amounts to depreciation in value of the properties being sold. Not every buyer is going to say, "Hey, fumes and vapors are okay with me." Again, I respect the gentleman, Jason and Bob.
If you could wrap it up, you're quite a bit over time already.
That's all I have to say, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of people have added some comments. I think I'd like to add another one too. Not to argue with anybody that's had a point to be made, but one of the things we learned when I took my paint classes is the modern paints are all waterborne. That means that what evaporates out of the paint when it's sprayed on is water. It's not volatile like it used to be. So there might be a little bit of vapor in the air for a little while, but these modern paints dry in two to three minutes, not hours. And there's no after-cure time like there used to be. So if there is a problem, it's minimized, and if there is a vapor, it's mostly just a little fumes and water vapor. Thank you.
I forgot to mention one thing. Not only did my father have that business there, but we also lived directly across the street. I was born and raised there, lived there for 24 years. So I appreciate when they say that young ones, little ones, being raised around the business concerns. My father would not have raised his family directly across the street, we were on Jamaica Street. And I don't have any issues from that. I think I'm doing good. And anyhow, wind goes in many directions, doesn't just go in one direction. So when we lived there for over 24 years, we never had a problem with the fumes and the noise. And so I just wanted to back that up. We have also been residents on the street, across the street from the business, so we can corroborate that as well.
My name is Jared Scott. I am co-owner of Three Stacks and a Rock Brewing at 3118 Main Street, Suite D, which is, I think, 25, 30 yards from these guys. And I'll just say that I've never smelled a smell or heard even a single noise, to the point that me and my business partner actually kind of joked that we thought it was a building being used as a tax write-off, that it wasn't an actual business. And we're like, how can that be a body shop if there's nothing ever going on there? So I don't know what the complaint is, but the way my building is set up, it kind of catches echoey sounds and I've literally never heard a single solitary noise from these guys. So I don't even see what this neighborhood's complaint is about this. It's a little bizarre to me because I spend a lot of time in the front of my business too. So it's a little odd and I have never smelled this, even one smell once. You would think that would have happened one time for me, being out there all the time. And I was just thinking it's a little strange that there are a lot of complaints about this because it seems like a very quiet, unused place in my opinion. That's, that's just my take on this subject. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. My name is Brian Chavis. I live at 331 Jamaica Street, which is directly across the street from the paint shop. If you're, if I'm standing at my front door, I would be looking directly in the bottom left-hand corner, directly at the back of that red truck. So I'm basically right there. I'm a mathematics teacher, so I spent a lot of time at home during the summer with my boys and during the holidays, I was just home for a month through Christmas. And during that month, I built a planter in my front yard. So I spent a lot of time right next to the building. And during that time, I, I mean, other than typical noise that you would expect, just from common sense from an auto body store, the noise level has been very low. In fact, having just invested a large amount of money in that home, when I learned that it was shifting ownership, I was nervous about that. And I just want you to know that I have been very, very pleased with the person that has taken over because I believe that he cares about the neighborhood and he's been very, very, very courteous about the noise. And I thought it was my cue to come up when Bob's daughter brought up young children being in the neighborhood and when this gentleman brought up that there are people that need to sleep during the day. I have a baby who is going to join us here in Morro Bay in two months. And he is going to be sleeping directly across the auto body shop during the day. And I feel 100% confident that he will be able to get his rest with the, and I say that just based off the current noise levels that I've been experiencing, they've been very, very, very low. So, and I will also have the baby in the front yard playing once the planters are built. And I have never smelled a fume. If I have, I would tell you. I'm aware that there is a northwest wind, I'm a surfer myself, but I'm also aware that the wind goes from offshore and onshore, it switches, which means that it would, it would blow from the Jamaica side over to Island, but then it reverses and it blows from Island back over to Jamaica, at which point if there were fumes, I would notice them in my front yard on my deck. So I just would ask this board to extend the conditional use permit. On one last, one last note, I, and this is something I would not have thought about and I'd really, really like to thank some of the people that have come up here and spoke, but about mobility and getting around. A few months ago, I hurt my back and I've always been strong and healthy and my back was hurt so bad, I remember walking through grocery stores hoping that somebody wouldn't just bump into me. And I know that the day is coming when my body, like everyone else's, is going to begin to fail. And when I had to drive to the hospital from Morro Bay, the pain was excruciating. And I, I think that it'd be really, really sad if we have an older community of people that enjoy a hobby, a hobby that they've enjoyed their entire life, that they would lose the opportunity to be able to come to some, to a shop that's in their own town and have to suffer a drive all the way into San Luis Obispo and back over complaints that, I'm sorry to say, I think are completely unwarranted and unfounded. Thank you.
Good evening, council, city. My name is Drew Zderas. I've lived in Morro Bay about eight years and I've got an old car. And I just want to say that the people have talked about the paint nowadays being far less smelly than it used to be are correct. They have, it's mostly water-based paint, they do use solvents to clean the, to clean them and the clear coat. But it looks to me, it's just a citizen of Morro Bay, that Mr. Paul's more than willing to do whatever it takes to make his business compatible with where it is. And I remind you, it's a small volume business. It's not like he's real shy. He's doing a couple of cars a week and, and I'm all for it. You can't get the service anywhere between Sloan and San Simeon. So there's thousands of people that could use this business and I think it's a good business to have in the city. So thank you for your time and your consideration and I hope you give him the permit. Thank you.
My name is Darrell Dobson. I reside at 333 Island, also known as a single-story dwelling. I am the one and my family is the most impacted by the situation as it is. I'm sure Jason is a fine young man. We do want small businesses in our community. I support, I endorse every effort we can. Problem being, this one's in the wrong place. If this was on Quintana, out by the pet cemetery or whatever, it'd be fine. This is in a residential area. I'm not a deluded person. I know odors when I smell them. I know noise that's disruptive and lowers my quality of life. I'm not an ogre. I'm not anti-business. This has been an ongoing situation done by the books. I've contacted the authorities. David Crockett's been to my residence, he has smelled, he has heard. Brian Unger from the air quality over in San Luis, the same, he's been at my residence. This is a matter of fact. I've written letters, I've talked to your code enforcement officer. I've been cool. In the meantime, I close my doors and windows. There is upwind and there is downwind and I would like the muttering to stop. It's, it's just lousy, anyway. I'm not imagining that I have the noise or the odor. I was asked recently if I have anything new to offer. This is sort of an emotional new to offer. My daughter, who has two children, recently was able to visit us and upon visiting my home, has decided that my grandchildren can't come down between 8:00 to 6:00 on Monday through Friday to visit their grandfather. That's funny. You hear that? That's funny. So that's what's new. You guys, thank you for listening to all of us. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Riley Paul. I'm Jason Rochelle's daughter. I have grown up around the car business my whole life. And as you can see, I am able to walk and jump and stand and do all of these things and be raised around this my whole life, whether it was in the auto body shop, around painting, standing on cars myself with official gas masks. And you can see that I'm healthy and able to be here. As he had just recently stated, his grandchildren are not allowed to be there during those hours. People have their own opinions on everything. You're never going to make anybody happy. But as other people have mentioned before, we have our views of these ways. We have mentioned that we will change things to make everything completely compliant and all of these changes and everything affect all of these people's lives. As we have mentioned, we have multiple employees that have children, that have brought them to the shop and all of them are healthy. So if you guys would like to do a health check or anything on us, we are more than welcome to do it. That is all I have to say.
I'd just like to address a couple of things real quick. One, as far as Darrell Dobson saying that Brian Unger came out, he is the head of the APCD that handles the booths. He is also the one that Joan has talked to that said we are within specifications and under threshold of what it needs to be. As a matter of fact, when I talked to Brian Unger, he said he has our booth permit waiting that upon approval from the commission, that I would have the permit for the booth within two days to staple back to my wall where it's been for 35 years. We are not even close. Everybody keeps talking about this threshold, this threshold. This threshold is based off of a full-blown operation body shop that is compared to like Los Osos Auto Body. I'm familiar with the owner there, I'm familiar with their operation. They have two booths running full-time, they have about 14 employees all the time. Those are the type of shops that they actually base the threshold off of what the allowable amounts are. We are a very, very small operation that's shooting minimal amounts of coatings and the spike they were talking about on Brian's thing is not even close to the allowable threshold. Yes, it's a spike because Bob, basically in his retirement phase, all of a sudden, one month, he would have more work than he normally did. So compared to what he was doing, there was a spike, but it still wasn't even close to the threshold.
Hi. Hi, my name's George Wright and I'm not a member of Morro Bay, but of Los Osos. I've been a customer of Jason's for quite a while, working on my truck. And a lot of the times I'll have to go over on Jamaica to talk to him about stuff. I have bad allergies and everything else. I can tell you, I smell the odor of the diesel trucks and the cars going down Highway One with the wind blowing it from the ocean and his painting and everything else, but those mixed together, I can't just smell paint. I smell diesel fumes and everything else and the people who live there, they've got to smell all those too. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Scott Mace. I lived here my whole life. I'm a little concerned about, he's talking about this huge commercial building and looking at the pictures, I'm seeing a little white building next to a huge apartment building with a shadow casted on his building. And it's really not in the middle of, there is some houses around it, but if you look out his front door, he's looking at another commercial building with the Three Stacks and a Rock and stuff. So it's not like it's in the middle of this little happy neighborhood and there's a freeway in front of the commercial building right there with cars going by it. So if a lot of these people are so concerned about their families and their childrens and their babies and their grandbabies, you know, maybe they should be concerned about the traffic and all the other stuff. I see plants in front of his building. I see a freeway in front of the other building. So I just don't understand what the problem of that little building is next to that huge commercial building or huge apartment building there. The other thing, Jason's a hard worker. I've worked on the building for him. He's done nothing but improve it, clean it up. It's not like it's a huge operation. The main part of their business, they're not spraying stuff constantly, they're fixing cars. The spraying part of it's probably the minimal part of it. It's not like he's doing it, it's a house and he started a business out of. That building looks like to me, it was built as a business originally. If it wasn't a paint booth, it would be an automotive business, which would still be involved with cars, working on cars, all that kind of stuff. So I don't understand what the, what the big problem is. He's meeting all the requirements for all the, all the boards and all that kind of stuff. And it just seems like people want to complain about something, you know, if they're so, the one guy was complaining about the property value is going to be less. Well, he bought the building eight years ago. When he bought it, the price was probably less because of that, that business was there when he bought it. It kind of, you know, the business has been there before. A lot of these people have owned these houses or rented these, these, these buildings here and, you know, it's like these people buy a house by the airport and then they complain about the airplane noise. So it's just, he's trying to make a business here for his family. He's working hard and I don't see why he can't be done with this tonight, all this. He's went through, spends a lot of money and time and all of our time when he's, all he's doing is just working and taking care of his family. Thank you.
I'm Diane, again, just next door neighbor. I also wanted to hit on the real estate part of it. I am a Realtor and the house directly across from the renter that's right behind Bodybuilders was sold a couple of years ago for $500,000 and it just sold again for $620,000. So nothing's going wrong with the property values, especially on Island. Of all, of all of the, the streets in North Morro Bay, between Island and Zanzibar, Island is very sought after. People want to live on that street, especially up against the creek, which is right across the street from him. And so for a house to, in a matter of three years, to go up $120,000, I don't think that the real estate's doing too bad in that area because of his property. And like I said earlier, it's been there since the 70s and these people bought it, they knew it was there when they bought it, and that's the way it goes. There's no reason for him to have to leave because someone bought a property right behind him.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Daniel Knight. I am representing the owner of Darrell Dobson's house. I come at it with a little different slant. I worked my way through high school, partially at Pete's Automotive, and then crawling slabs, finishing concrete to put myself through school and later became a lecturer at Cal Poly and teach vocational ed out at Questa College. But I'm also very familiar with land use and real property and as the, as the city has codified these zoning rules, people have been reliant on those too, that the city would stick to the rules, as written in my understanding and my practice. As that conditional uses are to mitigate the damages to somebody that the community has come around so that they're able to recoup their investment in the property. So allowing the initial user to be able to use the property until the economic benefit has been realized is entirely reasonable. I'm a small business owner, in fact, I've been employed less W-2 than I have as an independent contractor. And I can appreciate the personality of And I can appreciate the personality of, it sounds like a very fair and good and decent man. But my point is, is why are we going to let him invest all of this when we know that the city's zoning and ordinances are pushing to make this into a true residential property? Why would we allow that to happen when we see the inevitable? And that we're able to stop it now? And there has been some hemorrhaging of cost, I know. But why make it worse knowing that this is coming down the line? And as the community develops its well-settled case law, that as property owners come around and come to encompass and the community changes around the property, that the nuisance that might not have been a nuisance at first and has become a nuisance is expected to leave. It happens with farm animals. It happened with my shop when I had to move my back hose. My neighbors brought the residents around my place. I had to go buy a shop. I complied with the zoning laws. And I think it's unfair to the people that have followed the rules to ask for an exception based on the good character of somebody that I truly respect. I know reputation is very, very important and I take mine seriously as well. I printed up some signs of what you see from the road. And you can see it is a nice commercial zone, but you can see C-trains. You can see that. It sounds to me like that's been cleaned up though. But then you also have this, where you have a facility, and I think I mischaracterized this portion of it. I think that's actually businesses, I apologize for that. But you have homes surrounding this and as it develops and will very likely continue to develop, are we going to trap a business owner putting in potentially $100,000, trying to make a viable business only to pull the carpet from them 10, 15 years from now? So I ask that you do not grant this. We keep the community developing as it has been around there and as the character of the community is changing. But also having some certainty for people that are reliant on the zoning ordinances that the planning commission and city council solicited while still being fair to the previous owner. This is the character of an R1. Homesteads. Sure. I missed, wrong address on there. It was a UPS problem. I'll have these available if anybody wants to look at them. What I'm saying is, we have enough. Jerry Brown has also made a proclamation for the State Accountability, Housing Accountability Act, that we make these kind of decisions and we stick to the zoning rules. We've been asked to make more auxiliary dwelling units. New rules have come down for that and we're not honoring it by making exceptions on an arbitrary and capricious basis. So I ask that you at least take that into account as you're balancing the equities of the people that don't have a job attached to it but are losing value as a result of it. And of course, I'm one of many people speaking here tonight, so appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
It's getting late, so I'll be brief. One thing that I will say is that when I bought the home about a year and a half ago, the shop being there was probably one of the reasons why I was able to afford it. Because if the shop wasn't there, I'm not sure what the, nobody can look into a crystal ball, but I'm pretty sure that I wouldn't have been able to afford in that neighborhood or some of the people that have bought while it's been there. So to come in and buy something at a lower value because a business is there, and then to, at that point, say, "I would like my property value to go up, so I would like the business to leave," I'm not sure where there's any justice in that at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak to this? Then I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the commission if there are any questions for the public, any comments that you'd like to make to the public? If not, then I'll close public comment. Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to ask the applicant a question. You said you had another business in the city, yeah?
Yes.
And where is that?
It's on Scott and Beach, right next to Carla's Country Kitchen.
Oh, okay.
It's a zoning commercial industrial in that building. And one of the, I think I know where you're going with this, wondering, you know, as far as zoning, et cetera. When I bought that building, I came into the city and asked about putting a paint booth in that facility because of the zoning. And I was told that it would be a waste of my time to apply for all the permitting, et cetera, because it would probably never be approved. I do know of another shop that asked about a paint booth in the city. They had came in informally, asking about it, and they were also kind of led to believe the same thing, that we would be spinning our wheels to get a paint shop. That is the whole reason I had bought this business, is because it was already an operational and what the seller and I both thought fully permitted for its location, paint and body shop. That's the whole point in me buying that, just so I wasn't sending that amount of work out to Los Osos, to San Luis Obispo, et cetera. Because as of right now, we are the only body shop between Monterey and Los Osos. Cambria shut down, there is not one. We do a lot of work for Cambria. We do a lot of work for Cayucas. We do a lot of work for Morro Bay, those three communities mainly. We are the only shop that's local because permitting's hard. I mean, I know it as well as everybody else knows it. Having a business like this is a tough thing in our time because everybody wants a perfect scenario, everybody wants a perfect life. It isn't necessarily evil to get cars fixed, you have to have a body shop. We don't just throw them all away. Our big thing with this area is, we do definitely try to continue what Bob was doing and helping the seniors out in this area. We actually will go pick their car up and bring it to the shop, repair it, and then take it back to them because they have a hard time finding ways to get around. There's been several times, they drive their car to us, they drop it off, we actually run them home, help them with their paperwork because granted, one day I'm going to be in this situation too, where when the insurance company hands me a big stack of paperwork and they're telling me this and that, I don't quite understand it. We help them with all that kind of stuff. I'm not in this to wring every dime out of something I could. I would definitely be in something else if I was trying to get rich. This is not a get-rich-type of business. We're providing a service for the community. Did you have any other?
Is there any residential around your other business?
Oh yeah, there's lots. They're actually building two giant new homes directly across the back of my shop. The gentleman that spoke over there, his wife, actually her dad owned the building next to my other shop. And she used to live upstairs next to there. So when I bought the body shop, the first person I met moving in there was her going, "Oh my God, I can't believe you. Are you following me?" And she was actually excited to see that we were the ones taking over because she had lived next to my other shop. Their whole zoning in that area is residential, commercial. Most of them have really big garages underneath an upstairs unit, is what they're doing over there. And I think actually on your agenda tonight is another house you're talking about building that's like out the front of my shop and one block away.
Thank you. Here.
Excuse me, applicant, I've got a couple of questions for you too. On the APCD report, the year 2015?
I wasn't there in 2015.
Okay.
I've only had it for seven months.
Okay. On the recording on these, do you know if this is extrapolated from the material that is bought or purchased or if this is an actual measurement?
It's extrapolated from an actual measurement, a way out of material. Previously, when Bob was there, everything was hand-weighted, printed out, and scaled. And so what they would do is they would come in and they'd do an addition of all the material sprayed. The supplying companies also supply the APCD with everything that we purchase. And so they take a record of what was purchased, what was sprayed, and they see that. Back in the day, when Bob first started this, just because of the chemicals they were using, just about everything came in a gallon can. So you would have racks and racks and racks of gallon cans. Now, the way all the materials are, shelf life's lower, the materials they're using are lower, the VOCs are lower. Now, we're not even doing that anymore. Now we are getting these small, little tiny cork cans. And we keep them unopened, they stay in a rack. Once we use that pigment, that's when it's opened. Everything that I am doing now, when I came in, I had talked about upgrading the business when I moved in. First thing we did is we actually, because Bob was a little bit of a pack rat, 35 years, I don't blame him, you know, everything he's gonna find a use for down the road. I ended up hauling about four trailer loads worth of stuff out of the storage, out of the side of the building, et cetera. We repainted the building. I converted all the lights inside the booth and in the building to LED for better efficiency. Bob was using the old standard, which was a Styrofoam diffuser plate in the booth, which is technically not even a filter. All it is, is an offset Styrofoam that is supposed to knock down the solids as the air passes through. His first thing I did was go in there, contaminate, waste those out. And we actually are running stacked filters. We're using a sticky-back filter, which meets standard by itself. And on top of that, we're using a fiberglass filter, which meets standard. But I'm actually running those doubled up. As far as the odor goes, I understand the complaint. I've already been researching and I have some printouts, if you guys want to see them, on the activated charcoal filters and what they do, et cetera. Those are for an odor issue. When everybody's talking about these VOCs in the air, et cetera, and we're at our threshold, et cetera, the paints do have an odor. That doesn't mean that heavy solids are dropping on everybody. There's no fallout on our cars. We're not having overspray on our cars. It's none of that because the filters are trapping that. These filters that I'm running, and it's in your packet, are, I think, between 93% and 97% effective by themselves. And we're stacking those. Now that I have upgraded the booth, the other thing I also talked to was a paint manufacturer, our supplier that handles it. First thing we did is we brought in a complete new mixing station with all new pigments and a full computerized system. Everything we do goes into a computer, it's all scaled out digitally, it's all recorded. So now we just hit one button and the APCD gets a full printout. That's what they looked at to do the report on where we were at numeric-wise. And that's what they'll use from this point out, is comparing that printout of what we're actually mixing digitally. There's no way around it. We have to use this digital scale to mix it so it weighs out everything. It all goes into that computer and to APCD. And they also get printouts from San Luis Auto Parts, which is Napa. They are the paint supplier of our paint materials. They give APCD a printout and that is compared, those two. And also, we were checked out by, I believe it's the Coupa, which is ran through, that's hazardous waste, which is ran through the fire department in San Luis Obispo. They came out, were looking at what kind of waste we were generating. That goes along those lines, what I was saying about the old gallon cans and all that. The mix factors now, because material costs, et cetera, are so slight, that's the whole point of the scaling computers. So we're not having a lot of waste, we're not having a lot of unsprayed paint sitting. Everything is waterborne. If you leave the lid off of it for a little while, it dries up and solidifies into a non-hazard. Any of the solvents, which we use very few of now because of the waterborne base, all the solvents are recycled. I use such a low amount that a full-size shop like Los Osos Auto Body, they're required to have a recycler come in and pick that stuff up and it's reported. We do such a minimal amount that our reporting is actually taking it to the Morro Bay hazardous waste. We give them our address, they weigh it in. That's how it's logged to the county because it's so minimal. Any other questions?
No, I think that'll do it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if there are no questions, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Michael, why don't you start us off on this?
Well, my car outside's 19 years old and I thank the folks in Morro Bay who's kept it running most of the last 19 years. I appreciate our small business people and I appreciate the people who want to invest what's proposed here. The thing that's my concern, I want to voice with my fellow commissioners, is in my industry, which is the construction industry, the nature of products over the last 20 years has just been absolutely revolutionized. Everything you're talking about here with the VOCs and the car industry is completely mirrored in the construction industry. Things that would have been common in any of our schools here 15 years ago, you can't build with today. Anything that's an adhesive, anything that's a paint product, the understanding of the science behind VOCs is just through the roof. So I think we've passed a window where a lot of past practices would have been seen today as hazardous. But I think the industry's gotten to a point where the products that are being used, the VOC things are probably highly in compliance. That said, there's a lot of processes that, you know, I'm not a car person, but the nature of solvents to remove grease, to remove old paint, the way that some of these processes that would be undergone here involve dangerous materials. And they're seen far more dangerous today than they were 20 years ago. So I appreciate that the place was in operation and that people, you know, came by and thought things were running well, but we're in a totally different era now. And the metrics are set. They're not jurisdictional. They're set by the feds, if not the state. And they have to be met. And so this is a high-risk operation. If those things don't do what you think they're going to do, you're going to be at risk. And so my sense is, you're taking on that risk with this. My sense is that everything that was said about the microclimate, the shaping of the adjacent buildings with where the smells are being smelled makes complete sense. We're talking about places that are, looks to me like eight to 20 feet away. I appreciate the testimony of the person across the street, but he's twice as far away as some of these other people are that are lodging complaints. If you look on the images, you see their windows are at the same level as the flu. So when this work is done, that's going to be done, the due diligence has to be done also on your part, that whoever your vendors are, they understand those local conditions because this isn't going to stop unless those conditions are met. You're going to have these kinds of complaints, especially after all of this is done. So I think it's, my initial position without hearing my colleagues is, this is an extremely science-based operation, that it, no one is questioning you as a businessperson. I think it sounds to me like you've done an amazing job of making something happen here, that obviously you've got a lot of wonderful supporters. So I want to applaud that. But it is a tricky situation due to the proximity. And that proximity is very proximate. And that's what concerns me the most, is are these operations that you're talking about, the science behind the vents and the filters and things like that, is that the right, is that the right solution? You know, the spike in the VOCs just struck me as an interesting thing because if they're actually looking at less VOCs in the product over time, you would expect that to be ramping down instead of spiking up. Somehow there's a quantity thing there between 12, 13, 14, and 15 that I still don't understand, but it is what it is. That doesn't affect you, you're under a different kind of regulation today. So I just want to say, I'm thinking about trusting some of the science involved, but I do think there are, in the East Coast, we used to have a problem with snow. You do snow loads on a roof and you think you understand it, but you know, based on the way your neighbors work, you may think you're going to get a foot of snow, but your roof actually piles up about three feet on one side and your roof collapses. And I think wind does those types of things with odors. It doesn't surprise me at all that the South, the West, and the South neighbors immediate have more of a problem than the people to the North and to the East. So like I said, I think that's solved by, you know, there are ways to sample air. And it wouldn't surprise me if this goes on down the line, you don't have your neighbors sampling their air. So I think you have to be cautious about making sure with your vendors, these things are going to be in compliance.
First of all, I appreciate everybody that shows up and comments, positive or negative. It helps to process the information and arrive at a decision that takes into account the community. And one of the, first of all... community. And one of the, first of all, I like the fact that, you know, any business, you know, brings in jobs other than, you know, well, even, you know, any diversity of jobs to Moro Bay is of benefit. My concern is setting a precedent regarding industrial use in a residential area. Now, granted, we had this business, so as far as neighborhood compatibility, there's some history there, but it seems to me like I'm kind of struggling because the, it looks like the city really kind of screwed up here, you know, by putting, you know, by not addressing this permit that expired. And so it puts suddenly individual that has a, you know, it makes it even harder, has a great reputation of helping everything in the community, and putting it in a, putting them in a situation. That said, I also feel that when you, one of the things that I look at is what I'm willing to expose, like where I used to work and be exposed to a lot of hazardous material, hazardous situations, that I wouldn't necessarily want to have any of my family members exposed to, okay? And those industrial situations, when you go into that kind of workforce, you're aware that this is something that you'll be possibly exposed to. But that said, I am encouraged, or I am taking and processing the fact that the applicant is reaching out to the community and addressing and going beyond as far as trying to address some of the environmental issues in the neighborhood with regards to this. So that said, I'd like to listen to a little bit more about the commission.
I, as by way of preface, this is, it's quite a privilege to be part of this, this kind of citizen participation here. It's kind of a remarkable, remarkable exercise. That having been said, I'd like to approach this in sort of, what do we know? And it usually helps me make decisions. Clearly by the, what I'll call evidence, this isn't a strict sense, in the sense of a court and evidence, but what we know in the way of loosely evidence is that this doesn't represent a physical hazard. We're not talking about toxicity here. If anything, we're talking maybe about obnoxiousness, but not toxic. Okay, so. And we do know that the complainant took possession of his property with knowledge and disclosure of this ongoing operation. And there's some allegations that were written, but there's no evidence that the operation of the body shop has gone beyond the original scope of it, going back to nineteen eighty-one. And as to whether the neighborhood has been modified in some fashion so that it can no longer tolerate this kind of an exercise, as Commissioner Lucas said, that may be a distinct possibility for the future, but based on the response, it doesn't look like we're at that point. I'm reminded of the axiom that at these meetings, the only people who show up are the ones who think there's a problem. So clearly, there's a kind of, the perception of the problem here is that this place might go away, and it shouldn't. With respect to the issue of precedent, that's interesting, but because we, clearly, we don't want to establish a precedent for setting up these kinds of activities in what are clearly residential areas. But I think you can distinguish this, because we're, you know, we're doing equity here. We're doing fairness. We're trying to balance the interest of the nearby residents, and then against the interest of the applicant. And here, if you were to seriously cut back on the activity of the enterprise or abolish it entirely, there would clearly be a taking of property. I mean, there's an ongoing business, and we would say, you have to pick up and perhaps move to another part of the city. And that's, the feasibility of that is simply not an evidence. I don't know. There's a real, a real burden on that. So I think that's how, if we're persuaded to allow this activity to continue, that's how we would distinguish it from precedents, establishing precedents for doing something similar in the future. With respect to whether it's, this is an obnoxious activity that should be limited or discontinued, again, you know, odor is very personal. So in the absence of evidence that clearly says that there are serious odors being emitted, it becomes a matter of opinion, and the opinion's divided. And again, if I think we were to use odors, again, this is not a health issue, but this is one of the nuisance, if you will. If we were to use odor, there should at least be a substantial majority of the very adjacent neighbors who would wish to have this removed, and I don't, I don't see that. Now, with respect to the, again, I use the word allegation, the allegations that some of the tenants in the apartment building are opposed to this, you know, that's clearly third-party hearsay, again, evidence, which is, you know, notoriously unreliable, because A is saying what B said to me, and B isn't here in person, nor is his statement, so I can't, I can't question him. I'm also aware, I don't believe that this is the case here, but I have to take into consideration that landowners realize that the removal of an industrial activity from proximity to resident ownership is likely to increase property value. And I'm mindful that in this case, the apartment building was purchased, again, with full disclosure of this kind of an activity. I think that about, oh, I think that about covers my remarks. Yeah, it does.
This is, you know, the way I see this situation is it's, the precedence factor, you know, this is a continuing use that's been in continuous operation, whether it was correctly permitted or not, through the fault, you know, through whosoever's fault. But this is, this is an operation that's been continuous since eighty-one or previous. The, what we've had, and what is happening with the city, is we're having more intensive residential use, more than an intensive industrial use. We're having people build larger homes, two-story homes where there were single homes. We're having people who used to go to work, it used to be more of a work-a-day community, and it's now more of a retirement community. So not only are we intensifying the residential use in density and in size and also in cost, we're also intensifying it in the residential use in use and in time. So people are being retired and they're staying home more, so they're interacting more with the, with the industrial uses that are happening there. So what you're seeing is where there was a time shift before, I think you're now seeing more of a case where you're having, the time has shifted where the uses are overlapping. And this is where I think we get most of our problems in, in these adjacencies of industrial and residential. It's both, both the intensification of the residential use and maybe, maybe some intensification of the industrial use. So I don't think that this, we can consider this as a precedent setting. I don't know how many places we have here in Moro Bay that have, you know, a thirty-one or forty-one-year history of continual use. So, yeah, so there's very, very few. So, and then also being in an adjacency zone like this, where there is a, you know, could clearly be a problem. If this, if this was an application for a new use in this zone, it would clearly be denied. But this is a continuing, you know, the way I'm looking at it, it's a continuing use that's been established and has been in, been in there during the term when almost all of these residences and the adjacent properties were, were sold or purchased or built. So I don't see a harm or a situation that would, you know, where they, where they are harmed by new use. And I don't see this as being a situation where we have to do something dramatic, like change the, change the CUP to abolish a use that's been existing and has been continuing. What I do see, though, is I do see situations and the opportunity to increase the compatibility of the use for both of it. And clearly, the owner and the applicant are, I think, are, you know, consistent in their views that they're willing to do, to do what it takes to be a good neighbor here. And I, and some of the suggestions I, I think that could be tried are either relocating the stack, which I think would be, you know, the ventilation stack, which I think would be more problematic, but I think increasing the height of the stack may be, may be more beneficial, to get it up into a unconstricted airflow situation, where it could then not be in a, you know, a situation where the, where it, where you have turbulence there that then, you know, that then get into the neighbors' apartments in those second-story windows. So, so I think our building heights are fine there. I think we can run that stack up another, you know, this is not my engineering to do, but I think another eight or ten feet, and I think we would get up into clear airflow. And...
We did discuss that specific issue with APCD?
I did. I spoke with Brian Unger about that as being a potential mitigation, and he, again, I am not a scientist. I'm not a physicist as far as airflow pattern and whatnot, but he explained to me that that is not a feasible solution, that it doesn't matter really how high you would go unless you got into the, you know, over thirty feet. It really wouldn't make that much of a difference.
Okay. Well, that shoots down that theory. But, you know, but I think it would help. I think it would, it would, could diffuse it. And, you know, I was also the, bringing up the activated charcoal, you know, is probably, you know, a better mechanical solution, you know, for that, too. Then, you know, then the other, the other problems I see that could be, you know, could be problems with the neighborhood, such as parking, maybe implying some parking restrictions, and, you know, just codifying the hours of operation. And it wasn't brought up here, but it could be in the future, is night lighting, you know, restricting any lighting to, you know, downlighting, so it doesn't, you know, if there's any security lighting in the future, that it's gonna stay low and stay towards, towards the ground. But, you know, those are the conditions we normally put on a, you know, an industrial operation. So, so those are, those are what I see as, as the problem. So, interested in discussing them.
Well, I'm not sure I completely agree with the characterization of this as being in the middle of a residential area. The land use designation for that strip along North Main Street is commercial. The zoning designation for the lot where the apartment building is and this lot is mixed commercial residential. So this, this was not really envisioned as being, you know, a strict residential development. The R, as a matter of fact, correct me if I'm wrong, but the R4 overlay didn't exist until some years after the zoning ordinance was initially passed, and that was then added at some point. So, you know, I think a mix of commercial and residential is sort of what was envisioned in this area. Somehow, you know, I think it was envisioned that the commercial would be more along Main Street, and the residential would, would be further back, and it kind of got reversed here. I would like to agree with Joe, okay? I think, you know, what we are not discussing here is an issue of welfare, health, safety, or morals. What we are discussing here is annoyance, okay? And annoyance is a very subjective thing. You know, at any given level of noise, there will be a certain percentage of the population that will be greatly annoyed by that noise. And as the noise gets louder, a higher percentage of the population is greatly annoyed. They aren't necessarily more annoyed than they were at the lower level, you know, but it's a higher percentage of the population. But fortunately, what we're dealing with here is really a point source of noise, which is the compressor, as I understand it. And that is really easy and really cheap to deal with, you know? I mean, styrofoam baffles, we're not talking about a huge investment here to significantly reduce the noise level, and I think we should, I think, I think we should take that effort and bring it down to what our code requires, because it's, it's not hard to do. In terms of, in terms of the odors, it's the same thing. I think that using carbon filters to mitigate that, right now, right now, there is no filtration at all that removes odors, okay? The fiberglass filters and the tacky filters remove basically overspray on particulate matter, okay? So it seems to me that the carbon filters could be fairly effective in removing that. It would, it would really be, you know, I will say, with regard to noise, it would be really useful if we had measurements, you know what I'm saying? I mean, normally, if we're talking about, this lot requires a ten-foot setback, somebody goes out and measures to see if the setback is ten feet or not, and we, we don't have that here. But if, you know, but if Mr. Paul's measurements are correct, and they're, I went out and did measurements a couple days ago, but the compressor wasn't on, so I don't know. This is not a quiet bucolic neighborhood, by the way. The noise, the ambient noise levels, you know, at the site are between fifty-two and sixty-six decibels. So this is kind of an urban noise environment, you know? This is not, this is not Stony Brook Farms or whatever. And as a matter of fact, at the apartment building, at the front, at the Main Street side of the apartment building, the noise levels were actually significantly higher, fifty-nine to seventy-three decibels, and maximum decibel levels were up to, into the eighties. And those all had to do with pickup trucks on Main Street. That's exactly what those high-decibel. So, you know, we're, we're dealing with this in the context of a somewhat urban noise environment. Given that, however, you know, the response to noise has, takes into a lot more things than just the level, you know? It's the nature of the noise, it's the duration of the noise, it's whether or not... It's the nature of the noise, it's the duration of the noise, it's whether or not that noise is perceived as threatening, you know? So I get it. I mean, I get how, you know, annoyance on the part of some of the neighbors is a perfectly reasonable response, but I think that can be dealt with in terms, you know, with relatively simple sound insulation measures, which I would like to see added as a condition, you know? I think it's in there as a condition, as a matter of fact.
Yes, sir.
And I think that works. The other thing, one other thing that I, the height of the exhaust stacks, I don't know. If APCD says they're, you know, it's not going to make a difference, then I guess they know. The one thing I would like to bring up here is, okay, this CUP application was due in 1986, right?
Yes.
Pardon? Well, you know, and this, you know, I have to say, to me, the city bears a certain amount of responsibility in not going and saying, hey, your CUP is expiring in a year, maybe you should get your application in. And I would like to see us, as a planning commission, request that the city council reduce the CUP application fee to the level that it was in 1986. The application fee for the conditional use permit. So I'll throw that out for consideration. So the things I would like to, you know, definitely include would be the carbon filters, the, you know, increased noise insulation to bring the noise measurements, objective noise measurements. Come on, I mean, guys, a noise meter is like 40 bucks at Radio Shack, right?
I did use my cellphone, but I didn't put it in my staff report because it's not substantiated, so just FYI. That's why they have to do an acoustical analysis as part of their conditions of approval to get that actual number.
And honestly, there was some talk somewhere about a noise study. I don't think you need a formal noise study here, guys. I think you can do a little reading, you know? I think you're just talking about double styrofoam walls with baffles and, you know, with an airspace in between, most likely that's all, you know? So I would say let the applicant attempt to make the improvements, okay? Go out and measure it, and if it meets the standards, we don't need a formal.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
So what I would, my recommendation would be the carbon filters, although I realize they have to be changed and they require a certain amount of maintenance, but if this volume is less, it won't be too much. The sound insulation, and then I'd like to see us deal with the CUP fee.
With respect to the stack and whether it is effective, you know, that conclusion might have been that, no, unless you have a 30-foot stack, it won't alleviate the problem. But that isn't the same as saying that from time to time, it might do some good in the atmosphere. I think I'd like to see that put up, and the applicant seems sort of willing to accommodate. I think from time to time, it might do some good. But I am reminded again of Commissioner Lucas's comment that clearly the trends are working against the applicant, and I might even go so far as to say your years there are probably numbered, mindful that we live in a very litigious society, and sometime in the future, more people might take offense. So what am I saying is, in terms of your ongoing business and building a business and the ability to sell the business, that, you know, that might not be there in the future, so you have to think about that.
Could I ask you guys, staff, how, you know, and I would also like to say that something about lighting, like Commissioner Luer said, I think that's a good point. But how are we going to not have this, like, Groundhog's Day again, you know?
So it can be. This is a conditional use permit. So if issues, say, the scenario that Commissioner Graffia mentioned, that the neighborhood started becoming less tolerant of the use, or say, he became much more successful and was operating the, you know, was running a lot more cars through that facility, and so the, you know, the folks in the neighborhood became, you know, less inclined to support them, and then we started getting more complaints, well, it's a conditional use permit. We can bring it back to the commission anytime. That's the nature of a conditional use permit. You don't get it forever. And it's predicated on, you know, how you're operating and the conditions that are placed on it. And if those conditions are no longer, you know, addressing issues that are created by the business, then it's time to revisit it. In fact, we've talked about this before, but you can set timelines for review of conditional use permits. You can tell us, hey, we'd like to, you know, see how successfully, bring it back in six months, and see how we're doing with the odor and the noise. Those are things that are available to you through the conditional use permit process. It's very much, the idea is that you can tailor conditions specific to the use.
I'd like to, I don't know, I don't know that I would specify a time to bring back the conditional use permit, but I would like to see perhaps a point where we would review the noise levels from the code enforcement officer, to make sure that that's been achieved.
One of the problems we have on this is a nuisance smell or nuisance odor, and we really don't have a way of codifying that.
No.
And so it's a timing use, point of use, and, you know, and it's also the person's mental state when it happens. So, and that seems to be one of the bigger issues here, you know? So, but...
I think out of this process to address that, we could have the applicant contact us when he's utilizing the spray booth, and we can have staff go out there and maybe do that half a dozen times before he installs the activated charcoal filters to see if we do see something in and around the area. And then we can go do the same thing after they're installed to see if there's at least a difference that we can recognize, I mean, assuming that we notice anything at all. But I mean, is that scientific? No. Is it us going out there and checking and seeing? Yeah. I mean, and I think, you know, from a reasonable person's standpoint, that's not complicated. It's not a great burden on the applicant, and it's us sort of doing due diligence. So if you want us to do that, I mean, I'm happy to do it. I was actually already thinking about having staff do that anyway without your direction, but would be happy to make it formalized if you wish.
Yeah, I think that's a good, to establish baseline, and then, you know, we can then check conditions further down the road on that.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, too, because as Commissioner Luer was saying, I can't imagine in 10 years, we have, we're surrounded by one-story houses on island and things like that. This is all going to be developed. Somebody's going to want an ocean-top roof deck, and that flue is going to be there. And so it's, I think doing the maximum improvements now, which I totally endorse, is money well-spent because it's only going to get harder down the line. So I think that's a great idea, but I can't imagine that neighborhood being like this for long.
I have to ask about the idea of getting approval for a spray booth somewhere else in town. Is it really something that would be that difficult to do?
I would think yes, because you're going to have, I mean, you're going to have issues that were raised, who are issues that you're going to get out of a neighborhood with a new use going in. I would say if you're in an industrial area, those are the types of things you expect there. If you're in a C1 area or C2 area or something along those lines, and you're going for the conditional use permit route, depending on what's around you, probably likely that you would get a substantial number of folks coming out, especially if it was a more intense use, like the applicant identified the body shop in Los Osos that has two spray booths, operating, I guess they have two probably most days all the time. If you had a use that was intense like that, that could be something that the neighborhood's not really willing to accept. And so much less likely that it would be approved. But again, locating it in an industrial area, that would, those are the types of things you want there. So you would say, hey, you're over there on Quintana, yeah, that's probably okay. And if you have a house or residence that's next to that, they could be complaining, but you bought a house next to an industrialized property, and so that's what's supposed to go there. Seems less likely.
But I mean, it seems to me that in the long run, that has to be looked at because, you know, not only will this area probably continue to intensify in terms of residential use, but eventually, the value of that property will be so great for a residential development that it won't be economically, you know, down the road, it may not be economically reasonable to continue with this use.
Fairly common result with these over time, yes?
But if it's given a conditional use permit for industrial use and there's not that much industrial property, right, wouldn't that be of more value then?
I'm not arguing, well, the value there, I think some would argue would be in the, for residential construction over what's there.
Yeah.
I think the value, like, sort of intrinsically of having that use in town versus having to go to San Luis Obispo, that, there's value to that. That's just community-based, so you don't have to take your car that, you know, you got the door ding-donged someplace else, you can have it fixed in town, which is great. So it's nice to have that business here locally versus somewhere else. But that's not, that's not value of the property. I don't think it really affects it much. I think the residential value of those would be more in increased value by putting a residential structure of some type on it over what's there.
And we also talked about the intensity of use. It's theoretically not increasing. You know, if he was asking for a second paint booth with a flue, it would be a totally different story. We're assuming the level is reasonably within what had been there before, so it's not so much an intensity of use, it's actually a mitigation of what have been claimed to be nuisances within a level that we're also making the assumption, based on all the metrics, that it's not toxic, like Commissioner Graffia said. So, you know, I think there's a lot of because of that play out here. I don't think anybody's going to sell this as an industrial property and come in with any kind of industrial use, anything different than this, unless it's the grandfather clock shop, which I don't see some of this.
Scott, what is the actual zoning on this specific piece of property? I thought it was an R1S1.
It is R1S1. That table is wrong in the staff report.
Okay.
Yes. It's an incomplete table that was added. I believe the wrong page was printed, not quite sure how that happened. It is R1S1. It's directly adjacent to the MCR R4 SP property. The apartment building is the last parcel that's in the MCR R4.
Okay, that's what I understood, so.
Oh, I was just looking at the staff.
Yeah, looking at misinformation.
So I think, I mean, I think, I think I hear that we're pretty much in agreement with regard to investigating whether increasing the stack height would be useful to mitigate odors, installation of carbon filters, and noise insulation for the compressor to meet the city noise element.
One point on that is foot, you know, isolation pads on the technique for noise reduction. It's one of the things that's usually overlooked, and it's probably one of your best paybacks, you know, for STC ratings.
Yeah, it's because there's airborne and solid-born noise, they're totally different from each other, so sound isolation with, like, that's getting rid of the ground-born.
What about adjusting the CUP application fee? Is there any support for that?
We're asking him to spend some more money, so I'm okay with that.
Yeah, it's a kind of, yeah, kind of...
I'm going to be giving it right back.
Oh, yeah, no, and the conditions that Jerry mentioned with regard to, there were a couple of them, lighting.
Yeah, there was parking restrictions, hours of operation, and restrict night lighting, too.
Yeah, not that these are problems currently, but they're potential problems.
And this is already their mode of operation, so I don't think this would be burdensome on the applicant.
What are you asking for on hours of operation?
I would say, you know, 7:30 to 6:00, you know, five days a week.
That's what we do now, but we don't turn on the compressor until 8:00 AM.
That'd be great.
We can have no outdoor lighting.
Okay, but there's situations, and, you know, I'm finding, I never used to have a lock on my door.
I have those.
Yeah. So security lighting may be, you know, may be required at some point, but, you know. And then just parking restrictions to restrict any customer vehicles in, you know, on-site and not parked, you know, in the right-of-way.
So are you suggesting outdoor lighting or after-hours lighting should be directed in such a manner as not to impact adjacent residents?
Adjacent residents or night sky.
Not that there shouldn't be any necessarily.
Yeah. And it should be, you know, censored so that it come on, so it wouldn't be on continuous, but should be censored so that it only comes on occurrence.
Yeah. Yeah, raccoons.
Sir, can I ask for a little bit of clarification as far as the parking restrictions? So are you saying that cars that are to be worked on in the shop shall not be parked in the right-of-way, but cars that are, you know, customers that are driving to talk to, you know, may park in the right-of-way? So only cars that are to be worked on at the shop shall not be worked on nor parked in the right-of-way?
That's what I would suggest.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, transient parking is to be expected, you know?
Thank you.
And then I think, Michael wasn't supportive producing the fee? Are you in support of? I think we're, so obviously, we can't do that, right? We have to request that the city council do that.
And it's not coming out of our paychecks.
It's a darn good thing, too. It should be fun trying to find the fees from back then.
I pulled up a building permit fee from about this time period, and it was $17.80.
If they were that cheap, you wouldn't have to worry about having a building department.
So do, I think we have the making of a motion here?
Yeah.
Would anybody like to...
So I move that conditional use permit, UPO 468, be adopted with the aforementioned conditions.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second? Is there any discussion on the motion? In that case, can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Luer?
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia?
Yes.
And Chairman Teft?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
I believe we need probably a second motion to request that the city council reduce the fee to what it would have been in 1986, the CUP application. Okay, then I will move that the planning commission request the city council to reduce the conditional use permit application fee to what it would have been if this matter had been timely addressed in 1986.
Okay.
I'll second.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Sadowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Luer?
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia?
Yes.
And Chairman Teft?
Yes.
And that motion also passes 5-0.
Okay, and with that, it's now 8:30, so let's take a 10-minute break. Okay, and with that, it's now 8:30, so let's take a 10-minute break. Good evening, we are back and continuing on with our public hearing calendar. The next item is item number B2, which is case number CP0-513 and UP0-452 involving properties on Market Street here in Morro Bay, and I think Whitney's going to fill us in on this.
Thank you, Chairman Teft, Commissioners. This is a property on Market Street, 1128 and 1138 Market Street. On the slide I have up on the screen, that lot is marked in red. This is an application to construct two new single-family homes, both approximately 1,800 square feet in size, on an R2 lot in the Beach Street specific plan area, it's also zoned, has a plan development overlay on it. So, staff is recommending approval, there's a resolution attached with findings and recommended conditions of approval. I have a number of slides, just because it is two houses, so you get four elevations times two and floor plans times two, just in case you need to reference them, most importantly. But real quickly, I'll kind of run through those. And then I would just say, the only other thing that has come up, I've received no other real comments on this project, the owners of the house directly behind the lot came in and looked at plans and were supportive of the project. I did get a call from Patty Dunton, who is the tribal administrator for this, a Lennan tribe, and she asked that there be a Phase 1 archaeological study done as a condition of approval, which we can add that condition of approval and discuss that more if need be. I did discuss that with the applicant and she is amenable to, to doing that. This property was by our maps, more than 300 feet away from any known sites, and therefore we did not originally include that condition, but in deference to the concern expressed by the tribe, we can add that condition, that would be the only change to the resolution. Okay, so here we go. The lot is marked in red, on the east side of Market Street here, it's sort of interesting, it's residentially zoned, on the ocean side, it is commercially zoned. You can kind of see this here, it's our zoning map, it's sort of hard to reproduce in this area, but the yellow is the R2 PD Beach Street specific plan, so it kind of surrounds that purple and red area, both of which are commercial zones. Hello, little guy, thank you. I asked for some photo simulations, and this one's a little bit distorted, but it kind of gives you an idea of what the, certainly what the surrounding development on that side of the street is, and how these two, two-story buildings would generally fit in with what else is there. Just a more up-close kind of photo simulation, minus the surrounding development. Somebody said to me, oh, cool, we're putting in a golf course. It's like, no, no. And then just kind of down the driveway, look at the building elevations there, and a more kind of of the same angle. I would also like to clarify that despite some of these exhibits that I received, the applicant and property owner's intention is to stay with sort of a gray, darker, blue-gray kind of tone, and of course, when you reproduce these, they don't show up exactly, or really at all, like what those color shifts are. Whoops, let's go back to this. The property owner submitted this as kind of an example of how she would like to paint both of those buildings that are being proposed. So here's just a site plan, how they're laid out, the one at the rear, there's a 10-foot setback, the driveway, and then the house at the front, and the house at the front also has a little bit of an additional setback. And so here we go, front from Market Street, there is a little deck upstairs and that entryway is recessed some. The rear of that same house, you can see the upper floor has, has some cantilever areas on the driveway side, the north elevation, and the side that faces the driveway. Okay, in the back, you've seen these houses around town, they're, they're not super unusual, upside-down kind of main living area upstairs, two bedrooms, bath downstairs with the garage, this would be the rear of that house at the very back, the north side, and the south side, which faces toward the Mobile Home Park that's next door. So I have all these floor plans, and I think we'll just come back to them if you have questions, they're sort of hard to see on the screen, but just for purpose of conversation, I'm just gonna just zip right through these. There was a landscape plan submitted, you have the full-size sheets that include sort of example plantings, what the owner envisions putting in, which seemed like an interesting way to present her concepts versus, you know, locating each and every plant. You can comment on that if that didn't work out for you in this particular case. And there's permeable pavers in the driveway. So here's that final condition we would recommend, prior to issuance of building permit, the applicant shall provide a Phase 1 archaeological study. That's all of the slides that I have here. As is noted in the report, we're recommending approval, and I'm super happy to answer questions or hear your comments before the applicant speaks. Let's go back to some of those cool photo sims. Hello. There we go, all right.
So, are there any questions for staff? Michael.
Whitney, I just want to make sure, in my slightly clouded mind with my cold tonight, the R2 zoning, what's the maximum units we could put on this? Is it part of a PUD or special zoning? Somebody could come in with more units than this, if they wanted to be creative, super creative?
Well, this lot is, I think it's 6,600 square feet or something, so usually in an R2 zone, the, you need 2,900 square feet per unit, so you would end up with two units in our basic R2 zoning on this lot. And I would just say that in the Beach Street specific plan, this is in Area G, I think it is, and the, the only thing about Area G is it says you should apply the R2 site development standards. The sort of more cluster kind of development that has happened in a couple of places around town requires a minimum lot size of 8,700 square feet.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for staff?
This is only vaguely related, but the, the total zoning revision of the code, is there any estimate, you know, when a draft might be put together or when we might be asked to make recommendations? Just a Vegas notion, you know?
We're literally just now starting the zoning code piece, so it'll be a year from now.
A year, okay.
Whitney, this is in the Beach Street overlay?
Correct. Correct.
What are the architectural review requirements for, for that overlay?
Essentially none on this particular lot, and kind of not so much in general. This does also have, as do a lot of the lots in that specific plan, have the plan development overlay, so basically it just says thou shalt look at architecture, lighting, landscaping as part of your review of the project, but doesn't prescribe architectural, you know, designs or stuff like that.
So it doesn't negate the, our architectural design guidelines, then?
No, it certainly does not negate them.
Okay, thank you.
So, these, neither of these are considered a secondary dwelling unit, correct? They're equal dwelling units?
That is correct.
So, would there be any, would there be any restriction on their use as vacation rentals?
No, other than the moratorium that's currently in place.
And whatever policies we come up with to regulate them in the future?
Out of that?
Yes. One of which would likely be a distance between, so probably both of them wouldn't be able to be vacation rentals.
So then, at this point, is there, are there any ex parte communications to divulge? No. So then we will move on to public comment. Typically, we would invite the applicant or applicant representative to speak first, so please come forward, we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening, I'm Kathleen Streeter, and I'm the applicant. My intention for this property is to be a rental, not a vacation rental, so I'm hoping to have, it's their three-bedroom, two-and-a-quarter bath, so the intention is to have a small family live there, so. Other than that, do you have any questions of me?
I don't.
And they both are going to be the same color.
Right.
Very important.
I don't see any questions at the moment, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak on this project? Seeing none, then, we will bring it back to commission for discussion, let's start at your end, Joe.
Well, I continue to educate my notions of architecture, but I'm still learning. I look at this and it's, you know, nicely scaled, a modest house, and seems to have the appropriately broken-up masses, both vertical, it has a nice gable, and I like the cladding around the house, something other than stucco. So I find, you know, only, only praise for the appearance of the house, but that's just my opinion. I did note the, the suggestion that the balcony of the second house might make the house top-heavy, but I agree that because it's set so far back, you know, doesn't seem to offend my sensibilities. The only reason I asked about the zoning was, you know, it strikes me that the development office and, and this board will have a lot of input into that, and, and it's a shame that it's just kind of an accident of timing, that, you know, we can't sort of focus on some of those things that we know are coming. I was hoping that you would say like three or four months, and there'd be so little time between now and then. Okay, so, well, I was thinking, you know, particularly with respect to reclaiming rainwater and using groundwater for irrigation, and maybe this, the large driveway, which really cries out to be of some permeable material, so that it would.
It is permeable material.
Okay, so then the other considerations were just, you know, maybe some modest, I would think, I'd like to see some modest rainwater capture and gray water perhaps, but I'm just sort of throwing that out, because we know those things are likely to be in some areas of Morro Bay used, at least required. That was my other comment.
Jerry?
I have a different interpretation of the architectural detailing on this, and I don't, if you, if you look at Exhibit D, and that's there, could you, Whitney, could you pull that up for a second?
Which one are you talking about?
Exhibit D, the color scheme where.
Okay, fine, fine.
Her, her dream photo.
Hi, come on. And.
Okay.
There's a delay on this thing.
Now, if you could go back to those, the other exhibit, you know, A or, or C even. Okay. Yeah, that's, that's great. If she's looking to Exhibit D as her model, you know, what she's getting is nothing like that.
It was only paint colors.
Okay.
That's how it was painted.
Okay. Because, you know, our architectural design guidelines, our building design guidelines is trying to, to get more Exhibit D than Exhibit Cs. From, so there's no, there really is no articulation, you know, in plan, or even in, you know, in mass, and essentially you see, you see this house in stucco, you know, throughout the city, and this is much cheaper to build, I understand that, but, so that's, that's what I want to throw up to the commission, you know, that's, that's, that's really my only concern with this. I, you know, this is a, you know, it's in a overlay district that we do have architectural review on, and I just don't think it meets the design guidelines.
Yeah, I, I'm kind of leaning, when I started looking at this, I kind of leaning toward what Commissioner Luer was saying. I, I think that for the articulation, one of the things that I think that might help is like the eaves, you know, like, you know, where the overhang is, I, I think that might help in this particular area. And then the other thing is, is I appreciate the, what do you guys call that when, like, like when you do that and superimpose it on the lot? We have, you know, when the artist rendition of what the project's going to look at, I want to make sure that we're really careful that, that it's the scale, you know what I mean? There was another project that I'm not going to mention, but now that it's getting built and you look at it, and you look at the plans that, when, when it was superimposed, and it's like, wow, it looks like it was shrunk down maybe like 10% or 20%. So I want to kind of be extra careful that when we do look at it, we kind of have a right scale on it. But as far as the architecture, I, I tend to, I don't know, I'll, I'll listen to other comments, but I think that there's, that there's room for improvement there.
Well, I'm unhappy it's not blue and not stucco, so. I actually like the hardy plank look, it looks like it breaks down scale to me. I mean, we could, we could go round and round about the design guidelines in this one, and it has a recessed doorway, you've taken the corner off of the front to narrow the facade image down, you know, the, the living room of the front house goes back a certain distance, then the garage steps back, and so I think there's actually a lot of scale things here that I think are, are actually not bad at all. The white garage doors sort of pop at me as, as advancing a little too much, but you know, the pervious pavers, the obvious care with the landscape, and I promised myself, every time I saw a project, I would complain if it didn't have some kind of solar or water-saving feature, gray water, rain recovery, like Commissioner Ingraffia talked about, so I'll complain. So I'll complain about this one that way, too. I think we're making dinosaurs in Morro Bay. And I appreciate, though, in this area, that, I think these are reasonable size. If they were much bigger, they'd be tough. I'm happy to entertain, especially this part of town, where schools are walkable, downtown's walkable, stores are walkable, harbor's walkable, parks are walkable. I would really actually favor more density in terms of smaller houses. That's why I asked it before. I think it's really critical that we not turn the, you know, where we've got opportunities to put in housing downtown, that we go to small lot coverage. I actually like large lot coverage in town like this. The back elevation towards your neighbor to the east is not so great, but they're built almost on the property line, so I can't imagine they could be concerned that you've actually built 10 feet away. So I'll just leave my sour grapes there. Is that the tree in the front we're actually going to use? I'm really sad about all our trees that blew down this last storm. I should have said something at the beginning of the meeting, that I'm weeping for our loss of urban forestry. So I'm glad you're proposing a street tree there.
Yeah, well, number one, I'm glad to see two houses that are 1,300-plus square feet going in. I think that, you know, as we've talked about a lot in the G-PAC, you know, we have a community of small households, and yet we're building 2,600, 3,000 square-foot houses for these, for our 2.09 persons per household that we have here in Morro Bay. So I'm happy to see, you know, the size of these houses and the scale. The density is clearly more than the surrounding neighborhood, which are primarily one small house per lot. However, it's an R2 zone, you know? I mean, I think this probably reflects the community's vision for this area more than what's on the ground right now. The one thing that gives me a little bit of pause here, in terms of the architectural design guidelines, is the fact that this house doesn't really relate to the street. It relates, you know, the front sidewalk comes off of the driveway, and I would, you know, it's with the tree, with the tree right, I don't know, it looks to be smack in front of the front door, which kind of doesn't relate to the neighborhood. I'd like at least to see, you know, a spur of sidewalk, or not sidewalk, but pavement walk-up that precedes to the street. And I think visitors who come would also appreciate that, you know, that visitors who come that need to park on the street would also appreciate that. So that's the only sort of minor suggestion I have. Whitney, do we know anything about the history of this site?
It used to have a boat on it. There used to be a fence.
But we don't know that it's ever been graded or any structures. I'm just, was questioning the architecture, the archeologic review. I mean, obviously, if this is an old site that used to have, you know, houses on it or...
I don't, I didn't see permitted, you know, things in the history on this particular site. So I had the impression that it had been, you know, essentially vacant or used as storage for a really long time.
Okay. It's not too far away that we've had lots that have had things on it, but it's outside of the parameters that are set in our zoning code, which is, again, like what Whitney said, why we didn't initially require it, because it wasn't required by our code, which is really just looking 300 feet out. We are sensitive to local Salinian tribe input and local Chumash tribe input, and, I mean, that's where this came from. We realized that they had concern, given the proximity, so that's why I had Whitney reach out to the owners to speak with them, and sort of try to avoid any issues moving forward if we were going to have them. And this seemed, you know, a way to do it, and the owners seemed willing, so that's where that came from.
Was there a specific concern from them? Or was this just a generalized, anything in the neighborhood or anything in the town?
Basically, just a generalized anything in the neighborhood. And given, you know, it's not super far away from a known site that we're probably meeting right on top of as we speak.
Just the Salina tribe, right? The northern Chumash?
The Salinian tribe was the only one that contacted me in response to our ad in the paper, and just, I requested that we ask for a Phase 1, you know, study, archaeological study, and so that's what we're doing.
So are you going to reach out to the Chumash, too, just to let them know or not? I'm just curious, because I mean, if we're going to...
We didn't reach out to the Salinian tribe, other than them monitoring what we were doing.
Oh, okay.
And they may actually be on our notify me thing, I don't know, or you said they got it out of the paper, whatever. So, I mean, I mean, yeah, it might have been at a notify me that they, because she regularly comments, so I think she gets the notices. She signed up for them, and maybe perhaps Northern Chumash Council is not. But we do contact them. When we do Phase Ones and we find things, then we do let them know.
Okay.
Just so they can give us some input.
Oh, okay, so if they're digging up something, and then you, oh, you found a little something, something, then you would notify all the tribes?
We here don't play favorites, those two don't get along very well. But we, you know, we give them equal say to us. We don't, I mean, we don't say, no, it's you, it's you, we don't do that.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Just, as sort of an aside, though, it sounds like, it sounds like what we currently have in our code, it may not be consistent with what the local Native American tribes are, would prefer to have. Maybe that's something we need to work out.
So if you looked on the board in my office for the zoning code update that we'll be talking with the consultant about here in a couple of days, it has, one of the things is to create an archeological overlay. So, because right now, we have our own maps and give you where we found stuff, and then we send, you know, an inquiry off to Santa Barbara to get input, you know, when we are within the 300 feet. But we obviously have a pretty good idea throughout town where stuff's located, and so we were going to, we'll probably use an overlay and then run it by the local Salinian and Chumash tribes to get their input about the size and location of those things. So, yeah. I mean, we'd be required to run it by them anyway, so.
I think that's, it's one of those things, since that code was written, everything's been very different in terms of Native American, you know, rights and our archeological record for what we do know here in town. So it's huge difference, and it's about the sensitivity of what's in the confidential record versus what's been exposed through public processes.
Well, and right now, our process is, aha, gotcha, you're within three. You don't know until you submit to us and we look at it. That's terrible.
It's not fair to owners.
Yeah, it's not.
Who, if they had some help in the beginning, would likely know.
Yeah, and it sometimes can be very expensive, if you're getting into Phase 2 testing and things like that. And that's the reason why we want to have a sort of a, more of an overlay-type situation, so somebody could look at it before they submitted and go, oh, yeah, our property's in this area, it's important for us to have that, it's part of our package. And so, it's not the aha moment, because, I mean, it creates delays and angst on the part of, you know, it just gives that friction between staff and the applicants, it's just not worth it. I don't like this process. We just don't have a better way to do it right now.
But we will.
But we will, yes. I have faith.
We have a little bit of discussion about articulation and the architecture. Do we, is that, is that something we need to resolve? Is that something we need to deal with a little more?
It seems like I might be on my own on this one. I've just, I've just seen this house so many times, you know, and I thought the design guidelines were meant to alleviate some of those problems, but, you know, that's my concern.
My concerns may be a little, not as powerful, just more suggestion, more, I don't think they rise to the point where you have to go back.
Well, I was thinking of Chairman Teft's comment about the walkway, too. If we're really serious about redressing the design of Morro Bay, which seems to be by accident or history and design, dominated by the automobile, to revise it to something like a 50/50 proposition for pedestrians and automobiles, then, you know, having some kind of a walkway from the front door to the street is more than just a trivial suggestion, it's really sort of the beginning of trying to turn the ship. So I really, I really like that suggestion. And, you know, I leave it to the rest of the panel, if anyone has any additional architectural suggestions which would have a significant impact on the design, you know, I'm up for that, too.
Well, one of the things that could help is, you know, have a Hollywood driveway for the long, the long, you know, dogleg back, and then when you get, then when you get back into the back section, you can have, you know, then you go into your turnarounds and stuff. But at least that would, that would get rid of some of the runway appearance of the pavers. And at least they use pavers rather than concrete. But maybe splitting that, splitting that in two to where it's tracked, and you have the grass in the center. For one thing, it'd save you on pavers, you know?
But there's always weeding, I just have to say, having that situation at my house.
You know, the one thing is, this neighborhood to the east, has some of our most mature landscaping, and it's almost like, the more we think about the streetscape and some of these small changes, like Dr. Teft and Commissioner Luer are talking about, I think those things start to talk about, this is what we think can happen as we start to replace some of these older homes, without losing that sense of the garden. Because that's what's really fun about the older parts, is things have happened in really small increments over time, and generally, they've added a lot of character, you know? So I'm totally in favor of thinking about, you know, those aspects.
So like, for instance, are you saying more, maybe some more trees than just the two? They're going to do a replacement tree, because they're removing kind of a multi-trunk oak in the back, and they're required to do a street tree, so at a minimum...
Well, that's giving them credit for that, okay.
Yeah. At a minimum, they're going to, you know, have two trees. I don't know if you're, I don't know exactly where you're going with this. More trees or...
I don't know. I just think the smaller-scale issues that we're talking about being friendly to the street are good ones. The smaller paving pattern, I think is great. You know, the Hollywood drive. I don't, I don't know if we ever considered that in our design guidelines. Did we have that?
In the Hollywood?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I would say that's fine.
Dr. Teft, can you explain to me what you're talking about as far as the walkway to the door?
Well, if you look at that, the walkway are, okay, yeah, the walkway goes to the driveway.
Okay.
And I'm just, yeah, I don't object to having that one, you know, as long as, it's just that, what we're trying to create here is neighborhoods, not isolated residences, you know? And granted, this neighborhood probably has a lot of redevelopment to go on, but, you know, it would be real inexpensive just to add that little extra bit of...
You know, let me just, let me get myself in trouble here on this. I guess what bothers me about this project, and it's, you know, I understand, these are rental homes, so it's, you know, trying to be cost-effective, it's also trying to be, you know, and they will, they are serving a purpose, and it is, you know, but to me, they don't relate to the street, they don't relate to the neighborhood, and they don't relate to each other. And I just, you know, I appreciate the attempt on, you know, with the Hardyboard siding, and, you know, but there really isn't any articulation that puts these houses and creates the neighborhood that they should, you know, that they should be. You've got an opportunity here to do two homes that interrelate to each other, and they're just kind of plopped down, plopped back away from the street. The front house isn't, doesn't, doesn't relate to the street, and the back house doesn't relate to the front house, other than that they're on the same lot. And I just think, you know, I just wish that we were in a situation where we could create more connection to the street, to the community, and to create the community between the two houses. And that's what, I guess that's what bothered me about this project. But, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to deny it because of that, it's just something I would like to, would like to have seen.
The one thing about that street, on the other side, it's all commercial, everything. No trees, no nothing. The other side of the street's all commercial.
I'm not sure how we would address those concerns without sending it back, you know? And I guess I don't see them as being such large faults that we need to do that.
And that's what I'm saying. This is, this is something, I think it's more, you know, I don't, you know, I don't want to, you know, stay on my high horse and deny the project, but I, you know, this is, these are just concerns, I, when I view the project, and I view the, how that community is going to develop, you know, that that's where I would wish that we would be heading to. So view that as commentary and...
I do think, I think we're bringing the design guidelines back for review. Remember, they were supposed to be for a year, and they're coming back, so that's maybe the time to address that, is when we get those back. What about bringing that sidewalk out to the street? Is, are we, we're good on, we're good on that? Okay. Pardon? The Hollywood driveway?
So I have a concern about that. I've never seen a Hollywood driveway that was made out of pavers. And so my concern there is, you're now mixing and matching driveway materials, which is not going to look great. Meaning, you're going to bring in some other material, it's the Hollywood portion of it, and you're going to stop it, you know, right there, and then have pavers. I'm concerned about the look there, and so I'd like you to at least talk about that.
There is edging, edging details or edging, you know, edging strip that you can use with pavers that contain them and can, can work. They, you know, they...
What that looks like is six-inch curb, pavers in between, six-inch curb, most strip in the middle, six-inch curb, pavers, six-inch curb.
No, there's, there's plastic invisible, invisible boundaries that contain them.
I've not, okay, I mean, I've not, I've not seen that application used for the Hollywood driveway thing. I mean, literally, it was the first thing I asked Whitney about, have you ever seen that? Because I've not.
Well, you know, I've seen... Well, you know, I've seen them with brick.
I've seen, I have seen them with brick.
Which, yeah, so, you know...
I guess so. I mean, that makes sense. That's what you're saying.
But, you know, once again, this is, these are my comments more than what I would say require...
I just had a concern I wanted you to talk about. I mean, whether you choose to do it or not, they can figure out what they want to do with that. I just, immediately was something I was...
It's just that driveway has a long runway effect.
Is 12 feet the standard width for a driveway, for a single family house?
Generally, yes. The narrowest it could be is 10, and that gets a little weird to negotiate, frankly.
Depends how late it is at night. My sense, too, is the lot to the south of this, that is our, you know, trailer lot now, likely is big enough to have a very creative solution someday, if they would choose to. And the idea that the driveway is on this side facing what could be a creative residential solution someday, I think what we do with the driveway makes a lot of sense. If we try to do this Hollywood type of thing, it's just one more small thing that starts to add up. You know, and by the massing that they've got here, they've opened up space for that development to see out toward the rock. I mean, they may have actually, I don't know, I didn't walk the site, I don't know if you can see the rock from there or not, but they potentially have started something really good by making two things. The design I don't care for in town is when this is joined, in that joint, and you actually get this extremely dense piece. You know, so the little gap in there makes a big difference. I think from the street doesn't necessarily look all that different, but as you move around the site, it's going to be different. But I don't think those are hard things to do that we've asked for. I think they're actually very generous.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, I rode my bike there with my grandson, and I think there's a rental, there's a house next to the south. It's not, it doesn't, but...
It's part of the mobile home park, as far as I know. It is a tiny little house house.
It sits on that property, I believe.
It's on that same property.
Okay, 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 okay.
It's the non-mobile part of the mobile home park.
Do we want to entertain anything more ambitious with respect to water reclamation? Too early? I don't know.
I, I would honestly prefer to do that, I mean, personally, just personally, I'd prefer to do that as a standard at some point, rather than on a project-by-project basis. Because they didn't have any notice that we were going to ask for that, you know.
How about, Commissioner Lur brings up these, a real good point, when they do the electrical panels to have it, like, so they could piggyback solar on it, and that's...
Make it solar ready.
Yeah.
So I got a little bit lost on the Hollywood driveway. What was our conclusion on that? Pardon?
Plastic strips. Plastic strip technique, and it needs a week.
I'm sort of undecided. I mean, I'm sort of neutral myself, honestly. Pardon?
Water reclamation?
No, on the Hollywood driveway.
We should do it.
Should we say that staff will work with the applicants to do it if feasible, you know, to make sure that they can find the appropriate materials and that it works?
What is really the concern here? Are you trying to, like, break it, I mean, you could maybe say, oh, let's make this 11 feet wide and we'll have more of a planter instead of that one foot little thing on the south side of the property. There's going to be quite a bit of landscaping in the front of the lot, which will, you know, to a certain extent mitigate any just like stark, long runway thing. That would seem like a possible other solution.
Yeah, that's what I was asking when I was asking about the driveway width, is if there'd be any place to put anything organic along that south side.
Right, I mean, at least if you had a, you know, two foot planter along the south side, as much as you could, you could certainly get some vines or something in there.
But also, there's trees that align the mobile home park, too. So it doesn't show up.
Oh, okay. Would you like to come up to the, do you want to open this or talk your question?
Yeah. So I will open public comment for this, but that's generally the way it works, guys. We don't just yell out things.
Okay, excuse me. But along, so along the south side of the property that you're calling the runway, there are trees that align the mobile home park. So it's not just stark like that. There are actual trees that are there. So, you know, so, I mean, if there's a way that I can put some kind of planter bed, I'm happy to do that. However, I do want to include that there are trees that are on the other property. So it's not as stark as it looks.
I didn't even notice those. Isn't it funny? Okay. Okay, thank you. We'll close public comment and bring it back. I mean, I don't know, I would be comfortable sort of leaving this with staff, you know, to say, explore Hollywood driveway, or increase planters on the south side of the driveway in order to break up the, you know, or maybe even just in places, maybe it would just be little bulb out things, you know. To, just to break up the long straight driveway, rather than necessarily coming up with a prescribed solution. See, I'm just thinking, they could just do little areas like this, you know, that would, that would kind of make it not be so straight. So we've got solar ready, for sure. Extend the sidewalk to the street, and staff will work to break up, you know, to work with the applicant to devise additional plantings that will break up the long straight driveway. Does that work? Are we ready for a motion? Designated mover.
I move that we adopt, let's see, Coastal conditional use permit, CPO 513, resolution PC 5-17, with the mentioned amendments, which relate to driveway, walkway, and solar ready.
A second. Okay. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Graffia.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas.
Hi.
Commissioner Sadowski.
Hi.
Commissioner Lur.
Yes.
Chairman Teft.
Yes.
I wish you'd pass this 5-0. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations. Okay, we'll move on to item number B3, which is case number UP 0-282 and CP 0-323, located on Moro Avenue here in Moro Bay. And I think Jones is back on deck for this one. You couldn't get both of your projects together? Yeah. Are we good to start?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Teft. The final item, agenda item in front of you this evening, is a request for coastal development and conditional use permit approval at 530 Moro Avenue. It is located in the R2 PD S4 residential zoning district. The proposed development meets all of the development standards set forth in the zoning ordinance as they pertain to setbacks, height, lot coverage, parking, and landscaping. The applicant proposes to build a 2,444 square foot, single-family residence with a 548 square foot attached secondary dwelling unit, 888 square feet of garage space, 787 square foot basement storage area with a half bath, and 1,200 square feet of decking. Uses in the surrounding area include commercial office space adjacent to the east, you can see there at the back of your picture, if you will. Multi-family residential adjacent directly to the south, you can see on the right hand of that image, as well as across the street from the existing commercial building over there on the corner of Main and Driftwood. And single-family residential in, across Moro Avenue and on the other side of Driftwood. The site plan shows the structure setback at the rear of the 8,740 square foot lot. There is a 13-foot easement at the back of the building. The structure kind of sits on that easement line. The easement is in favor of the commercial office building, or property adjacent to the east there. It is for their parking lot. So the landscape plan is required due to the project's location in the planned development overlay zone. The plan includes fruit trees, as well as drought tolerant plants, to be watered via a drip irrigation system. Basement and storage and garage areas can be seen here in the lower level. This is the main floor plan. It shows the 548 square foot secondary dwelling unit located in the bottom portion of the floor plan seen there on the screen. This is the upper floor plan. Oops. So this oblique drawing does a pretty good job of showing the Balkan scale of the building. The project proposal includes a flat roof that is similar to other homes and other structures in the neighborhood. With an overall square footage of 4,667 square feet, the proposed structure is larger than most single-family residences. However, there are other large-scale and flat-roofed structures in the immediate vicinity, as well as in other places in town. Just the elevation drawings, I apologize for them being not quite so clear. This is showing the front elevation on the top and the rear elevation on the bottom, and the two side elevations. This is the color and materials board. The color and materials that the applicant proposes to use are consistent and very similar to other colors and materials used in the immediate neighborhood. It is compatible in that way. These are photo simulations, showing before and after, after, of course, on top. This is, the photo simulation is seen from Main Street. While the existing commercial office building is located on that portion of the lot, because their parking lot is located in this, at this location, it does create a view corridor, if you will, that is, of course, not protected, but you can see the bay from Main Street, and this structure will obstruct that a bit. But however, it is not a protected view shed corridor in our LCP, which is significant. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the planning commission adopt resolution 08-17, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for a use permit 282 and coastal development permit 323 for the proposed single-family residence at 530 Moro. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joan. Any questions for staff?
I have one question, Joan.
Yes, sir.
The 58 feet six inch setback, is that something that is now in place in perpetuity? Should there be additional designs, or if the property is sold to another person? Or is there the ability to site to build closer to the street later?
They do have the ability to build closer to the street later. They can go up to the required setback, which in the R2, I believe, is 20 feet.
Okay. My question being asked, because if this project is approved, one of the elements that will suggest approval is this setback, and then, of course, we'd like to preserve that. Okay.
Could you explain to me on Main Street, that view shed corridor?
It is not. It is just an existing view that is pretty significant when you're coming, when you're driving north on Main Street. You are able to see, you get a pretty good shot of the bay and the rock as you're driving up Main Street. I know there was some concern with people, I had two comments, two people from the public call and questioned what this project is going to do to that view. So there it is. It is not a protected view. It is not called out in our LCP or our general plan, and it is a view across private property.
And just about any two-story structure that you put there would impede it?
Yes, exactly.
Unless you did it with a much narrower footprint.
Okay, just, like, I'm just looking at, like, that parking lot, or when they built that commercial lot, they didn't do, that wasn't with a forethought of preserving a view there?
No, no, sir.
Parking lot.
No, huh.
Joan, with zoning that's on this, I have the same questions I asked Whitney before... Joan, with zoning that's on this, I have the same questions I asked Whitney before, but maybe you weren't here. This lot's big enough that in theory it could be two lots?
It could not be two lots, but it could have two single-family residential units.
And each of them could have a secondary unit? Like this one does?
Not currently the way our zoning is. Because it's a, because it would be a duplex use. Actually, I would say our, actually our zoning code's kind of silent on that. So I'll withdraw what I said and say our zoning is kind of not real specific about that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Are there any experte communications to divulge? No? Then this is...
I did receive an email from a concerned resident on this project.
This is a public hearing. Please come forward, we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening. It's really late, so thank you for staying to hear our proposal. This is, I'm Melinda Elster, one of the proposed builders' occupiers of the house. My husband Bruce. And this is our home that we hope to live in for the rest of our lives, and we're going to put a granny unit for my mother. So this is what we've been working for, for a number of years. And I wanted to address your concern about putting another unit in the front half of the lot. We worked, we wrestled for about a year trying to put three units on this piece of property. And not only could we not afford it, it turned it into basically a parking lot with no greenery, no grass, no nothing. So our decision was to leave, to put the house at the very back, so the front could be developed in the future. But I think you'll find, the zoning may change, the requirements may change, but there's so much parking restriction, it would be hard to put anything except another single-family house in the front of the lot. So that's how we left it. We made it specifically where the house was so that the front could be developed in the future if the next owners or our children chose to do so. Do you have anything else you'd like me to comment to?
Are there any questions or requests? I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So a closed public comment, bring it back to the commission. Richard will pick on you first.
I, to be, I guess blunt, it kind of looks boxy to me, like a big box, and I, from an architectural or a design standpoint, I feel that there's, the roof line, that's what bothers me, I guess, is I wish that the design would incorporate some kind of a breakup in the skyscape, I guess if you would call it that. There's, when you look around the neighborhood there, there is a, the, all the structures there have some kind of articulation in the skyline, I guess. And that's pretty much, that's the main kind of problem that I see with this project. Yeah, so I'll have to see if I can.
Michael?
Yeah, I'm very conflicted on this one, I have to tell you, because I appreciate that you said you were thinking about how to develop the rest of the property, because I think it's, when we're inside the city like that, you know, we've had so many projects where we've lost capacity to put units in, and people building very large houses that don't max out the capacity for people to live here affordably. So I'm glad that there's the possibility for things to be different down the line. I mean certainly the buildings around you are high-density ones that show a lot of people could be living here. So that said, I tend to find the design having a lot of problems. I think this east side especially is really tough to look at, because it looks like all the things that have small windows are collected together. And I don't think that that's necessarily the best look for that. There's a lot of things about the placement of the windows, and I really love the attempt at a different kind of palette. I like the palette. I don't like the way it's applied. And I think it does a lot of visual things to break up something that's very flat, and it's not successful in doing so. And I think Richard's comment about the flatness, the flatness doesn't bother me so much as everything reinforces the flatness with that kind of heavy top on it. So I know we're not in a architectural review board kind of mode, but I think the real problem with me is the other buildings around have a different kind of flow and articulation. The shingle building that's to the east of you is, I think, one of our great 60s, early 70s shingle structures around town. And I just am concerned about the articulation, given some of the issues that we have, and given how prominent the front yard is going to make this project seem. I'll wait to see what my colleagues have to say about it.
Yeah, I think I'm in agreement with the tone that I'm hearing from my fellow commissioners. I spent a lot of time looking at the other structures in the immediate vicinity, and they are large structures. And I was trying to articulate for myself why some were successful, and I thought this design was less successful. And I think it's because, because of the massing and the scale of it. The mass is considerably broken up, more so in that office building behind it, and certainly the multiplex building to the south. And I don't think that the variety that's incorporated into the design, essentially the cladding material and the colors and the balconies, are adequate to sort of break up that massing. I was also looking at something else that is, I guess, of particular concern to me, and it's that, this is a three-story structure. I realize part of it is a basement, but if you were to have a rendering of the west facade from the mouth of the driveway, you would see this as a three-story structure. And I think that kind of massing is a little bit out of keeping with the neighborhood as well. That's why I asked the question about the setback, because should this design be accepted, that distance goes a long way towards minimizing that massing, but then we would have to live with that if greater density is put on the lot. And then also with respect to the eastern facade, which, it'll obscure a viewpoint, and I understand, you know, that's what you deal with, with private property being developed and enjoyed. But that facade is also very flat and massive and without any articulation or landscaping to break up what was previously a view of the bay and will now be a view of that facade. And again, I'll relate to my earlier comment, which is, you know, undoubtedly projects of this scale and this location will be the kinds of projects that will be very concentrated in this new zoning code. And, you know, it's, and I'd hate to think that the considerations that will go into that new zoning code, you know, will escape our consideration of this project for just as an accident of time. Yeah, that's, those are my comments right now.
I think what's laid out on the site gives you a lot of future potential, as Commissioner Lucas stated, for further development and further density. And I, you know, I like the site plan on it. And I appreciate the, well, I really do appreciate the palette and the attempt at a more contemporary look. And I have, personally, I think I have less problems with this, seeing it's in a more, little more industrialized setting, or a little more high-density setting. I have less problems with this than I did with the last project, so I'm, it doesn't concern me as much, you know, with that. And I think it will be developed out. I think we will be going to more density in the future, you know, as we should on these sites.
I think this is one area, this is a very large house for Moro Bay, but I think this is a site that can accommodate that. You know, this is not, regardless of what the use of the buildings are in the vicinity, it's among other large buildings. So I don't really have a problem with the scale of it. I, I do, I guess mourn the loss of that view across the parking lot, but, but given the fact that, as I read it, this is, the width here is, the width of the lot is half of the width of the office building. So there's really no other place to put it. You know, there's not, there's not a way really to avoid that. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if I agree that there will be further development on the property in the future. It's actually, you know, there are, there are places for yards, there are places for open space in town, and maybe that'll be what we have. I think a little more thought could go into the eastern elevation. That almost, that almost seems sort of formulaic to me, kind of like, kind of like the windows are just put where they need to be for the interior spaces, and I guess I'd like to see that reworked a little bit, a little bit more. We, Joan, have we checked to make sure that the basement is in fact a basement? I believe 50% of the top wall has to be below grade, below ground level. Have we made sure that that's the case?
I have not, no sir.
Of course, in this area, we may not, in this area, we may not care, because I don't think there's a story limit. I think there's only a height limit.
That's correct, yes sir.
It's only in the beach track that we have the story limit.
Yes, sir.
The basement issue, whether it is or isn't, would only come into play as it relates to the building code.
Pardon?
The basement, as to whether it is a basement or not a basement, will only come into play as it relates to the building code.
Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry, I'll open a public comment.
Oh, you are ready?
Yeah.
It is a basement, and basement is a term defined in the California Building Code, and the basement is a basement. If more than 75% of the area is at 50% or more below grade, it's a basement. So that is a basement.
Yeah, we actually have basement defined in our local codes, however.
So the building is a two-story building. And the only time you see three levels is when you're directly in front of the driveway. When you go across the frontage, you can't see any more than two levels from the yard until you get, you don't have the site plan up, until you get right in front of the driveway. Driveway's 10 feet wide, and it's flanked on both sides by garden walls and a property line wall. So the notion that you're looking at a lot of building that's three levels, it just doesn't happen until you're right in front of it. Couple other comments I'd like to make, if I may. I pretty much grew up in that neighborhood. That used to be forested, all of that was forested, and the Main Street office building is the only remnant where you can still see anything left of the old trees that were there, and they built the office building around the trees. And there's still a couple of stumps on our place and then on the place next door. So the view shed is relatively new speaking, depending on how long you've been in town. The flat roof, we're planning on having the house equipped with as much solar collection as we possibly can get up there and can afford. The problem that I ran into when we were doing the building design is how do you articulate the roof and maximize solar gain? And so we opted to the flat roof, and if you look at the elevation, or excuse me, the oblique, you can see there's a parapet, a little short parapet, so that we can lay in the collectors so that they wouldn't be visible from any place other than on the roof. As well, if you want to put the site plan up, please. The, there you go. You can also see in the front of the yard, there's a cistern. And we're planning on collecting all of the rainwater, not just from the roof, but as the, from the office building next door, and directing that all into a storage tank. And the current plan is to have roughly 5,000 gallons of storage, so we'd be able to use that water for landscaping through the balance of the year. The rear of the building, yeah, it's flat, it is, but there's no yard back there. Our yard is a parking lot. And we set it back a foot away from the parking lot, so we can put a safety device in there to keep the cars from running into the house. So if you want to see it articulated more, really, to tell you the truth, the thought that I had on at the time that we were putting it all together was to mimic or play homage to the old Breb's fish processing plant, which was also in the neighborhood many years ago. And it had corrugated siding with wood, wood fills, as it were, very industrial. And so if you don't like it, you just have to tell me what you want to do, and we'll see what we can do about re-articulating the rear at that east. But it's not out of character with the history of what Moro Bay used to be like, for those of us that would prefer not to see Moro Bay get gentrified too much. And then in terms of the view, the view shed from Main Street, when you drive by on the east side, on Main Street, you see that opening, that view shed is open to you for roughly three seconds. If you're driving south from the downtown, you really don't even see it unless you make the effort to turn to the passenger side of your car, and you'll see it for roughly a second and a half. So the view shed... So the view shed is really quite ephemeral. And I don't know that I would, were I to be sitting in your place, to be spending a whole lot of time worrying about the view shed that really isn't there. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Joan, can you go to the upper floor plan? I guess one question I do have is, in the plan, it's shown as a straight facade to the west. And in the elevations, it's shown as if the master bedroom pops out away from the facade. So which one's more recent, in terms of what you want us to look at? Because that would read differently than the plan does. And the elevation in that three-dimensional drawing is a stronger solution than the plan is.
The image isn't, it's a little deceiving. The upstairs is, sets back. The deck goes over the top, and is the roof of the downstairs living area.
Right.
So when you go to the downstairs, the downstairs pops out.
Right.
And the deck upstairs is over the top, so the...
Right.
The, yes, okay, so if you take the line that's the west side of the building, where the door is in the master bedroom.
Right.
Flip back to the main level.
Right.
That's the main line from the secondary unit across.
Right. But in your three-dimensional drawing, the upper floor sticks out and breaks up that cornice line, which is a significant architectural difference between that and the plan. And this is far more significant than the plan is.
No, it, I don't, I think that's, I think that's a...
Mistake?
No, it's not a mistake. It's just the way that that's presented in that image.
That's an ambiguity between two different drawings that...
It's an ambiguity.
That tell you two different things.
What's there is the deck goes over the top of the downstairs, and the upstairs is, sets back.
Right. Well, I'm just saying that...
The accurate one would be the plan.
Okay. That's, that's too bad, because this one has more jumping of the facade features back and forth, which is a much more successful solution.
I could always make the bedroom bigger.
You, you could. You know, the other thing I was going to say is, in the back, I don't know how hard it is, I know the thing's designed, but that whole zone to the south of the stairway there, you're, you're building that bedroom deck area over top of the garage that's down in the basement level. And if there's a way to slide that just a little bit, maybe each side pops forward of where your stair landing window is in the center, that the facade actually jumps three times, with the master bedroom and the other bedroom pushing out just a hair. And, and in that way, if you slid that southern mass forward a bit, you could break up that back line. Even if it's just a shadow line, you're going to break it up. I mean, that's just a suggestion. I think the thing isn't so much to preserve the view corridors, this is going to be a really dominant elevation, because that parking lot's probably there. So this, this is a signature piece of Morro Bay.
Okay, walk me through it one more time.
Okay. I'm just saying that the east facade that we said was problematic, because it's on the, on the driveway of the eastern property, even though I'm not going to worry about the view shed toward the ocean, it is going to be a significant view for anybody driving along the street. And anyway, you could break up that back facade, even if it was just a foot, or a foot and a half, or two feet, whatever, to break up that flatness, I think would, would really help the project. I'm not going to condition it that way, because my, my colleagues here have, have shown support with it. But just architecturally, I just want to suggest, the way the materials are being used is very decorator-ish. You've got the, you've got the metal on the corners like they're coins in a classical building. And the industrial things are more based on mass. It's almost like when a mass sticks out, you code the whole mass as metal. You see a lot of those things in Slow, with some of the new projects coming up. And I, I think, I love the industrial palette. I think that's fantastic. I just don't think it's as, as interesting in its use just yet, as, as it could be. And I don't know if that means, you know, doing broader sections out of the metal. I loved it when you said you were referring to the old metal in town. That's, I think that's, that's a significant opportunity. We don't see people trying to use it all. And, and I'm not opposed to that at all. I, I think that's great. I just think it's kind of, when you look at the elevations, it, it tends to reinforce the box, instead of look like a collection of boxes.
If I may respond, I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying. I'm not, I'm not, I don't think I can make that work structurally. It just doesn't make sense economically for us to do it on the first level. But I could take, or we, excuse me, we could take the bedroom units and slide them forward towards the west, a couple of feet, and then leave the staircase area about, in the, in the same alignment. I'd be up for that, in terms of articulating the east.
Yeah, I don't want to condition it, because we're not in, you know, we're sort of architectural review, but we're sort of not. I, I just think it would help the elevations, and I, I think it would, you know, maybe reinforce some of the architectural ideas that are there, too, if you want to work on the corners, or if you want to look at some different coding of the masses. Because I, I love the aggressive attack on the palette, and I, I really like that you're, you're paying attention to what's available and the realities of town with the water and the solar. We don't see too many people coming forward that way.
Well, we're very hopeful we can afford to have this be off the grid, if we can afford to do it. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Mike, I, I just would point out, this is, this is a special design review area, so, you know, your architectural comments can certainly, can certainly go onto the record.
Yeah. And again, when I, when I looked closely at the neighborhood, it was the contrast between what is essentially one large square box and the surrounding structures. It wasn't so much a matter of scale as that articulation. This strikes me as something that maximizes the interior space at the expense of a kind of multi-surfaces, but unified it. I don't see that here. And like Michael talking about the view from that eastern facade, it wasn't so much, it wasn't at all that the view was being eradicated, it was that we will now look at a single facade with no articulation. And I, I would very much like, I would have very much liked to have seen a rendering, a 3D rendering from the driveway, or that showed the driveway, so that I could evaluate the, the scope of what that portion of the structure is three stories.
Yeah. In all fairness, I mean, looking at the, looking at the plan, the, to me, to me, this, this rendering right here doesn't, doesn't really, doesn't really help. It doesn't really show the articulation to it. The, the rendering from the west doesn't, doesn't really show the articulation to the advantage of the structure. I mean, there's, there's, there's much more going on than what it looks like from looking at that rendering. I guess, Michael, you're sort of content with giving that as input?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, like I say, there's so many wonderful things happening here. It's a very progressive idea. I mean, I, I think if you look at the rendering you gave us for the north-west quarter, like this, the way your north elevation steps back and has the material articulation difference at the inset, I think that's the strongest design part you've got. So if the front jumped out with the two bedrooms, and you made the center part over the stairway metal, but then you changed it to wood down where the people are entering the building, I think you'd have a kind of similar concept to what you've already got going on in the north, which I think is a little bit more successful. That's just my guess.
I see what you're saying.
Because that side, that side does have the inset and the popping out of the facade at the cornice, which breaks it up just enough, I think.
Well, our architect will be happy to do that.
Well, I, I think some of those things are kind of easy to do. The, the other thing is, again, it's just a suggestion, the really heavy cornice calls out the roof, as opposed to the massing. If you look at the, if you look at the shingle building to the east, and some of the other, there's a couple of shingle buildings somewhere on that street, that have the big curves on them. You know, it's about the mass as opposed to the cornice. The articulation of the cornice is a real classical thing, and the industrial things you're talking about in the simple massing don't, are kind of anti-cornice things. They'd be much simpler. And it'd probably be a little less expensive, too. You don't have to build out a big cornice, heavy cornice at the top.
So, right now, I hear a suggestion, maybe getting some more articulation by moving the bedrooms forward a couple of feet in the back, on the east side, right? And then we got a little, this, right? Yeah.
I was talking specifically about the, the west side.
Yeah, the west side.
But the east, the east side has less advantages, except they're just aesthetic.
Right.
To help break it up.
Okay, so the west, the, yeah, the, the east side just maybe popping in. But then on the, on the west side, there's a little discrepancy between the plans and what we see on the 3D rendering, right? I, would it, for me, it would help if, like, if these kind of things would be incorporated, and then we could kind of take a look, like at a later time, maybe. Like in a continuation, maybe, and have them change these things. I'm not making a motion, I'm just maybe making a statement right now. But I, I, because there's a lot of, there's a lot going on over here. And like I said, my, my thing is, is the, is the mashing of it, you know, it's the, being able to have some dimension. But at the same token, I, I am encouraged that, I understand the roof a little bit better now, nowadays, if you want to spank some solars, solar panels up there, and then, and then tie it in, and, and all, and the water reclamation area, you know, ideas, wonderful. I, I love that. I love that part of it, knowing that now.
Well, I agree with pretty much everything that Michael said, including the, his last comment about the cornices, which I didn't even notice. I mean, that's why, that's why he's an architect and I'm not. I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if we need to continue this. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know, I, I kind of feel like we've given the input, I, I kind of feel like the input's been heard. I would almost be willing to let it go with that, and approve it, and let them, let them take the advice.
Is, I, I have such great respect for Michael's insights in terms of architecture. But those suggestions are within our purview to, to impose?
Well, this is, this is S4 special design criteria overlay. According to the staff report, it requires an appropriate review of architectural landscaping, lighting, signage, and view shed plans.
Well, I mean, if we're serious about the suggestions that Michael's brought forth, and I think they're very good suggestions, you know, I, I think diligence should require that we actually look at them.
We could, you mean to continue it and bring it back, or make them as condition, or set them as conditions?
I, I think we should look at them.
Okay. You're on that, you're on that side. Okay. So, okay. So we have, I, I think we have some very concrete suggestions, very, you know, very, very well-thought-out suggestions. So, and the consensus seems to be, let them work on it, bring it back, and we'll look at it again. Also, however, also not major suggestions, you know what I'm saying? I think these are things that can be implemented fairly easily. Do we have a motion, then?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to, I might mess it up. I'll make a motion to continue, oh man, where is it? Continue this project on 530 Morro Avenue with, in review with the suggestions that the planning commission had made to a date specified by staff?
Yeah, to date. The date's been determined.
Date uncertain. Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second?
We're going to have a date determined. I, I don't want to get locked into, I need to know.
No, 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 undetermined. To be, to be determined, meaning...
The date uncertain.
Uncertain. So you have the ability to, to take your time to redesign it, work with us, we bring it back. We're, we're not setting the date for you.
We don't want to say, "You have to be done in two weeks, or else."
I was talking...
So we have a motion, a second? Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Lure?
Yes.
Commissioner Ngrafia?
Yes.
And Chairman Teft?
Yes.
Motion to continue passes 5-0.
Very good. Okay. Moving on, new business we have done, unfinished business we have done, so planning commissioner comments, future agenda items?
I just did want to say, I mentioned it in one of the hearings, the, one of the saddest things about these storms is how many trees we've lost. A lot of the really mature trees are gone. One on my street that did damage to one of my neighbor's house, I think he lost like a, it's like a 60-foot specimen tree. It was really sad to see, see that one. And all the, all the pines at the intersection of Atascadero Road and the, by the high school, huge number of trees down at that ramp down there. So I hope we remember to think about an urban reforestation kind of policy somewhere, where we, we have little niches we can add some larger trees to, instead of just the small little street trees and things that we're asking to be done now.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point. I mean, this, over the course of the last 30, 40 years, you know, Morro Bay has been essentially deforested. You know, there was, in the 50s, they had, they were giving out Monterey pines that when I first, when I first moved here, you could look up in North Morro Bay, and all you would see were pine trees. And, you know, so since then, because of the drought and blight, you know, that's been a continuation. And this last storm sure didn't help any.
Yeah.
So...
Did we lose a lot of the Ucal trees by the golf course?
I don't know what the golf course status was. I haven't really looked there much since they've opened it again. But, you know, judging from the debris I saw one or two trips through the park, it, they must have lost quite a bit of stuff. And they'd already...
I believe they lost over 100 trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, they lost quite a few down by the parking lot.
Between 108 and I think 120, something along those lines.
And I don't know what our, what our corresponding capacity is to work with, with partners like the state park or the, or the school district, because they have aspects of their properties there that if, if... that if, if we would end up with some agreement with them, if we wanted to look at that, they, they may actually have more capacity to absorb trees if we, you know, raised our tree replenishment rate two or three to one, and, you know, one of them went to a, a city-designated site, and one of them went to a partner site, or something like that. We could rebuild the high school perimeter, and maybe some things in the state park that are to our residents' advantage, to have those assets.
Yeah, we, yeah, would require, I mean, it's interesting. We're, we're having good conversations with state parks right now because of all the work they've had to do. You know, the park was shut down for a while, the campground was, was shut down, and, uh, and State Park Road, uh, they're doing work on that. It was damaged by the creek. Um, and so we worked with them and the Coastal Commission to issue emergency permits to allow that to be repaired, so they could open the campground back up. Um, and we're going to work with them on, uh, on getting the, it re-permitted through a coastal development permit process. So right now, we've had a lot of interaction with them, whereas in the, in the past, sometimes that, that conversation was, wasn't two-way. But it has been lately, so, I mean, it might be something to build off of at this point, since we are talking again more consistently.
Driving through town. Even driving through town, you see tree wells that are empty. You know, that, uh, so we, we have the capacity as just as street trees to take a couple hundred trees probably easily.
Yeah, it's not, but it's not just, it's not just the, it's not just the number of trees, it's also the type. I mean, you know, what we, what we've lost is giant mature pines and eucalyptus and oak, you know? And, and we're planting ornamental plums. So, you know, if we're, if we're going to, if we're going to maintain the, the, the character of the urban forest, we, we need to find places for more substantial specimens.
I would like to just make a comment. I'm on, also on the, the Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Commission. And then there's a subcommittee that is a financial subcommittee. And, you know, the, those, uh, the people that are on that advisory committee are all volunteers. And recently, the city council had, went out and are hiring a lobbyist for the WRF under the blanket that he's going to be doing other, other things. And I feel that the, you know, you know, we're going to have an advisory committee, those kind of things should be brought up to the advisory committee before it goes to city council. And another thing that, uh, on this WRF, and I've been on the WRF advisory committee for almost two years now, and, you know, we in California are taking climate change and sea level rise and greenhouse gas issues. It's a law, it's AB 32, it passed. And our consultants are still not up to speed on that. And, and I just, we just had a WRF tech meeting, and, and, you know, they're talking about rate studies, and some of those costs could be mitigated with the fact that if we get into the carbon market, and I just feel that, you know, people, um, people are very concerned about the escalating cost and, and, you know, about the project. And not only, I, you know, they're taking, oh, we're taking power usage, but we need to start having the, you know, public get educated on the fact that, you know, if we're building, building a plant in Texas, then it wouldn't matter. But we're in California, and California is a leader on this. And one of the things that, from that symposium that we learned is California is going outside, regardless of what Washington's doing. But they're having memorandums of agreements and understandings with, like, Jalisco, Mexico, with Ontario, Canada, with regards to getting into the cap and trade market. So I feel that, you know, we're really, our consultants are on the WRF are, are missing the boat there. Now, I, I will, um, like I said earlier, I will follow up with a write-up, and I will give it to staff with regards to the Climate Change Symposium that I went to, and with a little bit more information. But, you know, some of the, one of the things that I could tell people is CalAdapt is a website that people can get on and kind of learn at the latest science, what's going on, and how we're addressing sea level rise, saltwater intrusion, and, and the flooding, and, and environmental justice is another big thing. And some of the things apply to more urban areas, but we're a coastal community, and we're the last line of defense. And we should be leaders and forward thinkers, especially in innovation, being that we're on the coast. So, I'm a little bit more than a little bit concerned on the direction that WF is going.
Okay. Uh, committee director, uh, comments?
Um, I don't, I don't have anything for this evening, I'm good.
Okay. Well, then, we will look forward to Richard's report. And in the meantime, we will adjourn to our next meeting, which will be held here on March 21st. Thank you very much.